I want to welcome you all to the March 25th, 2021, meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. This time, we'd like to have an invocation by Commissioner Hutchins, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please join in prayer or reflection as we begin this session of the board. May Almighty God guide us as we deliberate these pressing issues that come before us this day. Let us continue our collective efforts as a community and a nation to mediate inequality, to end violence, and to facilitate the fullness of life for all in this tranquil place. Thank you, and amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as republished May 24th, 2021, but swapping the order of the work sessions.
Second?
I have a motion and a second that we adopt the agenda that was proposed on May 24th, swapping item one and two under work sessions. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Are there any public service announcements? We're going to hold off on COVID until we do the Health Board, so we'll combine all that together. Hearing none. At this time, we need to have a motion to convene as the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second, Mr. President. Have a motion and a second that we convene as the Calvert County Board of Health. Any discussion on that motion?
Just for procedural purposes, could we, in amendment, to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners?
I have a motion that we recess the meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners and that we reconvene as the Calvert County Board of Health.
Second.
And I have a second on that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. So we have with us today Dr. Polsky.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Nice tie.
Memorial Day. Our slides are up. All right. So we'll jump right in. As you mentioned, I'm going to fuse the COVID discussion at the end of this. I don't think we need to adjourn from Board of Health. I think we can do it all together. So as typical in the spring, I always bring up where we rank with national and state county rankings. So each April, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation comes out with rankings, and we have been doing progressively better over the last several years. So they rank in two different ways. This ranking is in what they refer to as health factors. Those are things like smoking, obesity rates, sexually transmitted infections, teen pregnancies, access to healthcare. And across the state, we rank fourth best. And then they have another ranking referred to as health outcomes, and that is life expectancy, low birth weight babies, and then subjective factors, how people self-rate their physical health and how they self-rate their mental health. And we are in the top five of those as well. I will say that when it comes to health, when we are mentioned in the same shading as Montgomery County and Howard County, we are doing really well. I mention those two because they're the only two counties in the state to have smoking rates less than 10%, something that certainly we aspire to here. And one of the reasons that we continue to move up in the health rankings across the state is that our smoking rates continue to go down and down. So when I started eight years ago, smoking rate across the county was about 24%. This latest year, it's down to 15%, which is tremendous. It means for every three smokers we had in the county before, we're now down to two. The only concerning sort of out there on the horizon is that, as we all know, vaping rates among teens is very high. Now, these are pre-COVID stats. There are a lot of health stats that are kind of on hold for 2020 because the people who usually come out and generate those stats are kind of busy with COVID at the moment. And we really don't know. It's one of the things I'm interested in, as kids were physically kept apart during this last school year, what impact, if any, did that have on things like vaping and teen pregnancies and a few other things. All right. One of our usual transition slides, so Tidalscape here in Southern Maryland. And so next, I'm going to transition to overdose deaths because, as I'm sure you're all aware, in the midst of the pandemic, both statewide and nationally, overdose deaths increased yet again. Statewide, this last year, overdose deaths increased by about 18% to an all-time high. Calvert was one of only four counties in the state that had a decrease in overdose deaths in 2020. And when you look over the last three years, because we never like to just single out one small piece of time, we looked at the last three years statewide, overdose deaths have risen about 23%, 24%. In Calvert County, overdose deaths have dropped 26%. And currently, if you take a look per capita, overdose deaths are 40% lower in Calvert County than they are statewide.
It's amazing that this still happens. This is not new, you know? I mean, you could see it being removed from a generation, how the 70s had all the opiates and stuff, and you could see, okay, maybe there was an ignorance, but there has not been an outlet, media outlet, print, anything that has not talked about the dangers of this stuff and how it continues to happen. It is mind-blowing.
And that just speaks to how poorly we understand the drive for addiction and our very limited abilities once somebody does have addiction to be able to help correct that and move them back in a better direction. And I know we're time-limited, so not going to get into all the different factors, but I do want to just touch on two programs that I think are certainly part of what is moving us forward in this. One is the collective program, the Rational Reentry Program, that helps people who are have been arrested or now in the judicial system. We know that about 80% of inmates at our local detention center have treatable behavioral health needs, and this has certainly been a collective effort. And you see all the different symbols from the different county agencies, private agencies that have come together to try to help, and this has certainly made a huge difference. These are not only providing services, screening and treatment services in the detention center, but very, very importantly, bridging those services when people are released. And we see with shorter and shorter sentences that need to bridge people out back into the community is really critical. And then as part of this is the newer program that we have at the Health Department with the Mobile Crisis Team, and this has been building over the past two years. So this is a team that responds along with EMS, along with the Sheriff's Office or state police to an overdose. They arrive on scene. As long as that person is medically stable, then our team takes over. So the EMTs, you see down in the bottom right, once they know that things are stable, they can move on. And so I think one of the important things to drive home is that prior to our team being out there, that the EMS team then needed to transport that person to the hospital. That was more time that ambulance crew was taken away. There was more paperwork involved. Now, once the person is stabilized, our team takes over. That ambulance crew is now freed up if somebody has a heart attack, if somebody has a stroke. So everyone in the community benefits from these types of collective efforts. And then just wanted to highlight, this is a comment from Corporal Moran, who is with the Sheriff's Office on the Special Operations Team, and I'm going to quote what he said. "Mobile crisis team responded to an incident in Dunkirk per my request for an adult female having a schizophrenic episode. The mobile crisis team was able to convince her to go to the hospital for an emergency evaluation in the MCT van. This prevented what would have most likely been a hands-on forced emergency petition by deputies after the patient had stated several times that she did not want to go to the hospital. The mobile crisis team was able to work through her delusions and convince her that an evaluation was in everyone's best interest." So again, speaking to, this is not just isolated to people struggling with recovery, that there are spillover effects that directly or indirectly impact all of us. And the last thing that we need is to have law enforcement getting involved in areas that they don't need to, and an inciting problem. So again, I get back to, this has just been a tremendous collective effort across the county to deal with this problem. In 2021, so far, our overdose numbers are stable with 2020. We hope that we'll see that start to shift further down. And then just quickly, because Lyme disease is an ongoing problem, and as I remind everybody at my Health Department, we are not a COVID department, we are a public health department. So the potential for transmission in Calvert, in 2018, there were 103 cases in Calvert County that dropped down to 49 in 2019, but that's still twice as high per capita as across the state. And this shouldn't be a, we may never get to equal. If you live in Baltimore City or in Rockville, your chances of getting Lyme disease is close to zero. But we know that education goes a long way. This is an almost 100% preventable illness. So I've showed this slide before, but I bring it up again because I think it's so important every spring to remind people as they and their children are out potentially getting exposed to ticks, that if either you or your child is bitten by a tick, if you remove the tick within the first 24 hours, the potential for Lyme disease is zero. And that really speaks to the importance, especially for those with children, every evening or pick a time of day, that you're going to, as long as they're outside playing, which we want them to be outside and playing, that give them a good check to make sure there's no ticks. If you see one and you remove it within the first 24 hours, then there is no risk. About 36 hours is where that risk really comes in. And then by the time you get to 72 or three to four days after, you see the risk of transmission is getting close to 100% at that point.
So Doc, you hear both ways. If you don't get the head out, it doesn't count. I heard. If you just get, what's the truth on that?
Well, you certainly would like to get the entire tick off. And we talked a year or two ago, I brought in a little device that makes it almost impossible to leave the head behind, which is a little plastic device that we buy in pet stores that is really meant for dogs and cats, but works great for people as well. It's just a little plastic thing that costs a buck. But if the head gets left behind, now, there's no further risk of Lyme transmission, but the problem is that that's a setup for bacterial infections that are on the skin because you've got a foreign body there. So you do want to try to get the entire tick off. If the head is left behind, just very carefully with tweezers, just try to go ahead and get the rest off.
But the number one thing here, get him out.
Correct, correct. And if you discover, because the nymphs on deer ticks are so, so small, every once in a while, somebody's going to miss that. So if you do discover a bloated tick, if the tick is bloated, it's been there for more than 36 hours. But the key there, and again, we've mentioned in the past, that there is a prophylactic dose, a single dose of antibiotic that is basically 100% preventative of people getting Lyme disease. So if somebody does find a bloated tick on them, remove it as soon as you see it, and then call your doctor, your nurse practitioner, if it's middle of the night, you can wait till the next morning. But call them within that 24 hours, and you actually have 72 hours to take the antibiotic once the tick is removed and that treatment is incredibly effective. It's the same antibiotic that you would otherwise need to take for two whole weeks if you waited and actually developed Lyme disease, but it's just a single dose if you catch it early, and it's actually more effective if you catch it early than you wait for the, you know, the whole two-week treatment. Children below age eight are not eligible for that treatment because there's a potential toxicity for kids, which again, makes it even more important to really thoroughly check children.
Doctor, public notice for this in our Parks and Recreation area?
We have in the past. I'll make sure that we have something.
That's a good call.
Now, yeah, because the sign that we have right there on this slide, we would post in certain areas around. And I'll also remind people again, prevention is what we always strive for, not waiting for a problem to happen. So if you have leaves or debris in your yard, remove that. A lot of studies have shown that over 50% reduction in Lyme cases around the house by just getting rid of debris that's around, because it's a perfect place for both the ticks and the animals the ticks live on, because they don't just live on humans, to get them out. And then for personal protection, DEEP, which is actually safe at any age, say, less than two months, you shouldn't use it, but it's unlikely you're going to have a one-month-old out in a place that would be exposed. And then oil of lemon eucalyptus, that should not be used in children below age three, but otherwise, it's very safe. And permethrin is the spray for clothing and for shoes or boots. It is not meant to put directly on the skin. A little bit will come in contact with the skin from the clothes, but that's not a real issue. But it is a big skin irritant if you put it right on the skin. And then a little cityscape, and we will transition over to COVID cases. So we're extremely happy that we continue to see the number of cases trending down. So this week, we only saw 57 cases. I will say that that puts us back at the level we were in early November, but certainly way lower than we were going back into March, where we were seeing close to 200 cases a week, and our positivity rate is down to three. I just want to quickly point out, because I know that sort of this feeling is building that maybe we're done with this, that this is not a history lecture. We are still very much in the midst of this. And statewide, I put it in the top right corner, this past week, there were almost 2,500 cases diagnosed statewide. Again, I always say those are the ones that were diagnosed. There are other cases that go undiagnosed. There were 91 deaths across the state this past week. 450 people are currently hospitalized statewide, and over 1,100 emergency room visits this past week. So age distribution, I just want to point out a couple of things overall. Clearly, things are down. In the 75-plus range, you see a little like line there because there was only one case this week and one case the week before. And for the first time in the 66 to 75, there is no fourth bar because there were no cases in people 66 to 75. So people over 65, this past week, we saw a total of one case. And again, that should really drive home to people how incredibly effective these vaccines are, that that is a population where we've seen the greatest uptake of vaccination and the most dramatic drop in the number of cases. That is not by any means coincidental. The only age groups we saw modest increases were in children and early adolescents and in older teens. And then the big chart, I'm not going to go through this in any detail, but things are kind of status quo as far as where we rank statewide. We're still second highest in terms of the number of seniors vaccinated or proportion of seniors vaccinated, and we're still 11th in terms of overall population. And then I put in a few numbers because there was a question last week from Commissioner Hans specifically about the 12 to 15-year-olds and then maybe about the 16 to 18-year-olds as well. So we've seen a pretty quick uptake of vaccines. Vaccines have only been available for 12 to 15-year-olds for just a little bit over a week, but already about a quarter of the 12 to 15-year-olds in our county have gotten a first vaccine. We are trying to work with the schools to, you know, the timing was not great for the school year for the 12 to 15-year-olds. We're trying to work out for next week to actually do vaccinations at each of the middle schools, at least get a first dose in, and then the second dose would be into the summer, and we'll do the best we can. Our parents at that point may need to bring their kids to one of the other sites. And for the 16 to 18-year-olds, we're getting close to half in the county have had at least a first dose. And then you can see again for the 65-plus, we're at 88.9%. And I have the picture of former Commissioner Wilson Parent up there again, just to mention that in our African-American population, and this is great thanks to our local African-American leadership here, that vaccination rates in African-American seniors are actually 5% higher than vaccination rates in white seniors in our county. That is certainly not typical statewide or nationally.
So maybe this summer, at the summer camps, could arrange to do some vaccinations? Gives you an opportunity where you have some congregation of kids?
Absolutely. And we are trying to work with martial arts studios, dance studios, every and any business or organization that adolescents are part of or the majority of who they serve, to see if we can work out something either on-site or a way to really work with the parents to make sure that the kids have an opportunity to get vaccinated.
Pools, the Co-Point Pool, the pool up at the beach?
Yep, absolutely. And we now have a van that we're ready to start moving out so that we can hit maybe two or three places in a day, because we know the numbers will be relatively small. We're not looking at hundreds of people at a site, but if we can get 25, 50 people vaccinated at a site and then move to someplace else, that would be great.
Because in the summer, people are on vacation, so they're out traveling, and, you know, you lose the structure, your normal life structure, so.
And not that we want to overlook, because although our hope is that the cases will continue to go down over the summer, I will mention in March, that the big increase, basically tripling to quadrupling of cases in March, was because we had that the UK variant showed up. It wasn't that there were more susceptible people, it's just that when you end up with a variant, people who otherwise had dodged the bullet, all of a sudden, transmission rates go up. And so it's possible over the summer that a new variant may pop up. So we don't want to overlook that we may see cases pop back up again. But certainly, the biggest driver is that before the school year starts, that as many middle school and high schoolers are fully vaccinated as possible. And we sent a letter to parents this previous week that reminding them that if their child is eligible for vaccination and they're not vaccinated, that if one of the students sitting near them is, comes down with COVID, that the kids around will need to be quarantined for 10 days, and that means that their child is not able to attend school, so, and sports and other types of extracurricular activities. So there's, again, making sure that by July, if not sooner, that adolescents have started their vaccination series, I think is extremely important for everyone.
Doctor, the downrange plan, because this thing is not going to drop off the map on December 31st of this year.
Right.
The downrange plan for sustainment, has there been discussions with the State Health Director and CDC as to what that's going to look like?
Well, and so there have been discussions, and this is such an unpredictable problem that we've been dealing with. So one of the questions is ultimately, how many people are left unvaccinated? And at that point, are we looking at individuals or households? Because that's where, you know, we see the greatest transmission is that once somebody gets it, that almost everyone in the household who's not vaccinated ends up getting infected as well. Or are we going to see, you know, the widespread? And unfortunately, and we'll talk about nursing homes in a moment, you know, nursing homes are very well-vaccinated at this point. So what that will look like come fall into winter is unclear right now, but there are discussions about this possibility, that possibility, but certainly no plan's been finalized because we don't know what we'll actually need to, at that point, lay out. Certainly, everyone's aware that if we do end up with a variant that evades the initial vaccines, that there will be a need to ramp back up to make sure that that supplemental vaccine is available to people as quickly as possible.
With the return to air travel, and it's going up like a rocket. To me, that's going to be a major issue, because we'll be right back to the same situation where in the course of five, six, seven, eight hours, you've got someone to travel from somewhere else in the globe, offloaded here and in the population.
Absolutely. And certainly vigilance will be very high. And I think everyone should understand at this point that if in any part of the country, all of a sudden, their cases start to jump, that that almost certainly means that there's a new variant there, that, you know, you don't just have same old, same old, same old, and then just coincidentally, you see, you know, this mushrooming of cases. And so there is additional, still additional screening at airports for people coming in. There are testing requirements, or at least testing recommendations, for people coming from overseas. And it also speaks to the importance of vaccine getting to other countries as well, that my understanding is that in Canada right now, less than 4%? I mean, you know, we think of third-world countries, but Canada, less than 4% of people have been able to get vaccinated at this point.
Really?
And they don't manufacture their own vaccines, and so like every other country that doesn't do their own, they are completely dependent on the goodwill of people producing it to sell them vaccines. And so, you know, I'm not here to make national policy, but we certainly need to be very, very aware that prevention elsewhere means that we're safer at home, because you're right, it is a completely global world at this point. And then just want to close with how well we are doing as a county and how much worse things could have been. So statewide, there have been 9,022 deaths in Maryland. We are 1.5% of Maryland's population. So if our fatalities resulting from COVID had been proportional to the state, we would have expected that 135 people in Calvert County to this point would have died. We've seen 70 deaths now, certainly tragedies for those people, their families, but we have prevented 65 deaths, even if we were at average, much less if we were worse than average. So almost a 50% reduction in hospitalizations. And I think one of the stories that we'll see into the next year is the number of people with residual health problems as a result of their COVID infections. And I'm not going to touch too much on myocarditis today unless you want to, but certainly, we've seen just thousands and thousands of cases of myocarditis because of COVID. We've seen people are going to have compromised respiratory systems, people with strokes and all sorts of other blood clots as a result. So we would have expected 646 hospitalizations based on state averages, and I love the math here. We've actually had 323 people hospitalized. That is exactly a 50/50 split. So we have prevented half of the number of hospitalizations that could have or would have occurred without taking all the measures that we collectively have. So I just listed some here, which I think are worth noting. The single most important, these are roughly chronological order, but I think the single most important thing is the partnership between the Health Department nurses and our local nursing home administrators and staff, that we essentially, as much as we could, put a virtual bubble wrap around our nursing homes. And we ended up with one true outbreak in a nursing home, and unfortunately, the timing was the month before the vaccines became available. But we saw across other parts of the state and across the country, just how horrible things were in many nursing homes. Private practices jumped on board very quickly. I think that Dr. Johnny and Dr. Matus practice in Calvert Internal were probably two of the first practices in the entire state who started doing COVID testing on their own patients, and then other practices adopted that pretty quickly. That also, I think, one of the big sort of philosophies here locally was that COVID testing should not be divorced from people's overall healthcare. It was a critical time to give people advice on things, to reinforce the importance of isolating when somebody was sick. And it was really driven home over last spring and early summer that we knew the winter was going to be bad, and that people with underlying health conditions, diabetes, high blood pressure, people who were significantly overweight, and you can go on with the list, kidney problems, that they had about three or four months to try to get their health improved to that if they got COVID over the winter, they were less likely to become seriously ill or die. And then we saw as the evidence for face masks started coming up in April, that both residents and businesses adopted face coverings quickly. And when I was out and about, I saw that almost everybody really was doing their part. And another, I think, core tenet is that, you know, we are here not just for our own well-being, but we are here to also try to help our neighbors, especially those who are most vulnerable. I can't speak enough about the emergency room and ICU staff at our local hospital under extraordinarily trying conditions, especially in the first few months. You know, we quickly forget how, you know, just basic things like gowns and proper N95 masks were in such short supply, and they were literally putting their health and their lives at risk. And then dedicated contact tracing seven days a week to make sure that people could take the steps to, you know, again, protect their neighbors, protect their family members. I mentioned outreach from African-American leadership. It wasn't just with vaccines, but other measures as well to help keep people safe. And then our County Office of Aging, working with the nurses from the hospital to go out and do vaccinations at locations where seniors live in the community to make sure that they didn't have to drive anywhere to get their vaccines. The Health Department nurses jumped back in when we saw CVS and Walgreens faltering in nursing home vaccinations. And that partnership that we had established many months before, we were able to just almost instantly go in and get people vaccinated. And then all the staff at the drive-thru that have just, I think, done a great job regardless of what the weather was when it was cold and, you know, sub-freezing days and they're out there. And I think, I've yet to hear really bad experiences from people out there, which I wish we all along had had more vaccines early on. So again, just, you know, everybody throughout the county doing a tremendous job. And then just to remind everyone that we do have vaccines available, anyone 12 and over, and you can register directly. And then we are running vaccine clinics at the drive-thru four to five days a week, and many people's family doctors now have vaccines available for them.
But you know, Doc, hopefully, you know, America's famous for short-term memory loss. You get to a go, oh, we're good, to whatever the next thing is, and, you know, a beat on all the time. You put some money in prevention, starting at the school level. You know, New York City should not have to get on TV and say they don't have machines, you know, the ventilators and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we spend billions and billions of dollars on other things, but we always forget infrastructure, always forget the healthcare system, you know? If you're not healthy, what does it matter? I mean, take the most rich guy in the world and trade it all, you know, to be healthy again. But, you know, we'll see when talks start in Annapolis again in January, if all of a sudden, it's all forgotten, right? It was the big thing, you know? But we'll, hopefully, a lesson comes out of it. But we'll hopefully, a lesson comes out of it.
And I very much hope you're right. And, you know, health is the most important thing, but we can't forget that money is always part of the equation. And sometimes, you know, people forget that we pay way more for healthcare per person in this country than any other country in the world, and we're not healthier than a lot of other countries in the world. And that's because there's more preventative efforts other places than there in the U.S. So I am hoping that maybe one of the things that comes out of this is, as you said, a shift to more preventative.
And I hate saying it, now you go get on a soapbox. When I was a kid, you didn't go for 9,000 different tests, right? You see it now, I mean, you see, it's a test for this, test for this, can't get information from one office to another office. All this costs money when everybody touches it, you know? And all the time you see now on TV, if you take this medicine, well, you're not cured, but your levels are so low, they're undetectable and all that. Why? And I hate being a conspiracy guy. If you can do all this stuff, why not just cure it? If you could take it down to such a, you know what I mean? I hate being a conspiracy guy saying that. I always say, seems like sometimes the money is in the treatment, not in the cure, right? And I hate being like, because, you know, if all of a sudden you cure it, there's no more money. And I hate saying it, so that's why I go back to your immune system and healthy practices is the only thing you can control. I just really wish they would focus a little more on that and starting at the school age, just good practices.
Absolutely.
I mean, spending all the money, you know, after the, after the horse is already out of the stable, been a whole lot cheaper just to build a better fence.
Right.
So, Doc, they're talking about a booster, and I don't know if you have information that we don't, but I would anticipate that won't be a two-dose booster.
At this point, I have not seen any evidence that the vaccines are wearing off. And so, again, I, I, I think that when the term booster, I've heard it used, I think it's used in a kind of a sloppy way, that I think a lot of times people are referring to what I would consider a supplemental for a variant, supplemental dose for a variant. And to me, a booster is you're giving the exact same thing to literally boost up immunity. There's, I'm not aware, again, of any evidence that people who've gotten vaccinated at this point, and the initial trials were back last July, so we're getting closer to a full year from the first people. I'm not aware of any evidence that those people, we've seen any increase in infection risk for them. My, my sense is, and again, this is purely just based on just general immune system and virology background and how other vaccines have worked and how coronavirus is in general are treated by our immune system. If I had to put my money down, it would be somewhere between two to five years, I would expect, at least for the Pfizer and Moderna, given that they do have a booster built in, that two dose. The Johnson and Johnson, I expect, will wear off a little bit earlier because it did not have that initial booster dose.
And you currently have all three vaccines?
Correct.
On hand? And if somebody wants a shot, all they have to do is register and pick a, pick a time?
Absolutely. And and so we do, the, the bulk of our vaccinations right now are either Pfizer, because they're more flexible, we can vaccinate at any age 12 and up, and Moderna. So do take a look, and we try to emphasize when people register that it says Moderna Clinic or it says Pfizer Clinic, and we're altering. So this week, we have two Pfizer clinics and two Moderna clinics. So if people have a preference, or if someone already had their first dose of Moderna, then we want to make sure they have an opportunity to come back for their second dose as well. The Johnson and Johnson, because it's a one-time, and we don't have that, you know, the potential to intermingle.
So Commissioner Hutchins sort of alluded to, but I assume that in some point in the future, the vaccination site on 231 is probably going to be removed. There just won't be enough volume to justify the manpower that it takes to run that.
Right, and we, we've had some discussions about that, and we don't have a set answer because, again, we don't know what demand will be. And again, there's just been so many unpredictable twists and turns through this that I, I will say it's likely that we will run it through the summer. And at that point, because I want to make sure, and, and one of the things that, one of the, the groups I think that we have to, we have to keep in mind is for college students who don't always have a personal physician, they sort of outgrow in their pediatrician, and they may not have a family doctor yet, although it encourages them to do that. But there are a lot of colleges, both in Maryland and out of state, that are going to, that have already announced that they're requiring vaccines to go on campus. So my expectation is, and they'll need to be fully vaccinated, so my expectation is July into August, that at least for that group, we'll probably see a bit of an increase in demand, sort of like, you know, a lot of things people wait till last minute. But my hope is that by that point, most of our primary cares have already started vaccinating, that at that point, all of them will have started making the vaccine available.
There'll be a transition into a different location to get your vaccine. That's why I asked last week about the number of first doses, because that's the indication of, you know, those 600 people are going to need their second dose in
Right.
Two or three weeks, and, you know, it's going to trickle down where, you know, we
In this past week, there were about 2,500 Calvert residents who got vaccinated. And of course, there was a boost because that 12 to 15-year-old age range became eligible for the first time. But we're still seeing a good number of people who vaccines had been available previously and are now becoming more comfortable, or for whatever personal reason have decided to move ahead. Maybe they know somebody who developed COVID and had a serious illness, but, you know, whatever their motivation is fine. So yes, I, I expect that a mass vaccination site or a community vaccination site will be unlikely by the time we reach the fall.
And I don't know if anyone else has, but it's the only government operation I haven't received one complaint about, is the actual physical operation of getting your shot on 231. Everybody that does that, once they do that, say it was pretty amazing. Staff has been outstanding and seamless and
Well, and, you know, health professionals take their jobs incredibly seriously, and it has been, what I've emphasized from the beginning is that people should receive the same level of care at our county health department vaccination site as they would expect to receive at their family doctors. This is still part of their health care. And that means getting questions answered, taking time to do things right, and certainly from a, you know, there, there's no room for error for things like this.
Yep. They were all very friendly, at least in my experience. No one had a bad day. So it was a very good operation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just, just a, a quick comment. You, you pretty much robbed me of what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. In the sense of, you know, zero complaints and laudatory remarks. I mean, job well done.
Just imagine if you could get your shot and pick up your permit at the same time.
Or get your driver's license renewed, not to pick on a particular state agency, but but it, everybody commended the operation down there, how, how great it was, so.
Thank you very much, and I'll certainly relay that to our staff.
Yeah, trust me, if you weren't doing a good job, we would be getting emails, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they don't normally call to compliment, they usually call to complain. So when they compliment, you know that things went really well, so.
And I, I've even, I've gotten some handwritten thank you letters
Yeah, right.
From, from people, which, you know, we certainly appreciate, you know, any, any good feedback, whether it's a phone call, whether it's an email, but, you know, there is something a bit nostalgic to see that, you know, people actually took the time to get some stationery out and write some things.
So as Commissioner Hart alluded to, it'll be interesting to see how many of these practices continue on as far as washing your hands and wearing a mask, because we saw zero cases of flu, and everybody says it's because of the sanitary actions that we took. So it'll be interesting to see if next winter, people remember that and practice that a little more often and see how that affects our flu cases.
And we were having a little discussion over the weekend amongst a large group of the physicians, nurse practitioners in the county, and that was one of the things that was brought up is, you know, in both the medical offices and their recommendations from doctors to their patients, when we start to get toward flu season, as to how those messages will be conveyed. And certainly, it's very unlikely there will be anything mandatory, but if people see the value for themselves and for others.
Right, and if all those hand sanitizing stations actually stay up
Yeah.
And operational, that will also help people take the action, so it'll be interesting. So, well, thank you very much, Doc.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move we adjourn as the Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of Calvert County Commissioners and continue with the agenda of May 25th.
Second. Have a motion in the second that we adjourn as the Calvert County Board of Health and we can reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Director Vasallo?
Morning Commissioners, Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. You have two appointments today. First one is to the Veterans Affairs Commission. This is actually a two-step process for us. So the first item is to request a motion to appoint the following members of this new board. I'm going to read through their names, their position on the board, and their years of recommended appointment.
Linda, can we just explain to the public that they have to have different terms amongst the, the candidates because you can't have them all renew at the same time?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, we're doing staggered terms.
Some will be for one year, some will be for two, and some will be for three, right?
That's correct.
Right.
All right, so the first, we have seven of the nine positions ready for your appointment today. The first one would be for Jeffrey King, for a one-year term. He is owner and operator of a local business. The educator or educational administrator is still vacant, we're trying to recruit for that. Three at-large positions are Matthew Blackwelder, for a two-year term, Michael Sweeney, for a three-year term, Michael Wood, for a two-year term. The next appointment is for American Legion Post 206, Patricia McCoy, for a three-year term. We are still recruiting for American Legion Post 220, we're recommending a two-year term for that. American Legion Post 274 would be Michael Richardson, for a one-year term, and American Legion Post 85, for a three-year term. So we are requesting a motion to appoint those individuals in the staggered term.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint those individuals that have just been identified to begin their staggered terms on the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
So I have a motion in the second that we follow the listing that was presented by the deputy administrator for the members of the Veterans Advisory Commission. Any discussion on that motion?
Veterans Affairs.
Veterans Affairs, sorry, thank you.
I just, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to commend Commissioner, Commissioner Hutchins for his initiative in providing this commission to our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you. The second part of this is to appoint three non-voting ex officio members. I'm going to go backwards on this one. The Director of Human Resources will be the Board of County Commissioners designated representative and liaison, and we are still working with Veteran Affairs Coordinator at the College of Southern Maryland, or their designee, or the Director of State Side, State Side Military Operations of the University of Maryland Global Campus, or their designee. So we are requesting a motion to appoint those three individuals as non-voting ex officio members.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. President.
Move to appoint the ex officio members, one already identified being the Director of Human Resources, and two others that will be identified by name at a later date, the Director of State Side Military Operations of the University of Maryland Global Campus, and the Veterans Affairs Coordinator for the College of Southern Maryland.
Second.
I have a motion in the second that we designate three non-voting ex officio members. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. Your, your last appointment today is to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan Board of Trustees. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint John Mattingly. There will be two vacancies for Citizens members coming before you in the future.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion in the second that we reappoint Johnny Mattingly Jr. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So do we have applicants for the Citizens positions?
Not yet.
So for anybody out there listening, if you're interested, please contact the office and get an application to be considered. Next item on the agenda is old business. Director Woodson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Earrings and masks.
Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director. This morning, I am here for three old business items, and I will read the memo. The first memo that we have is pertaining to the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan Amendment Service Time Calculations. Background: The current calculations for years of service includes both benefit eligibility time and accrued service time. Accrued service time does not include unpaid absences, which causes a shift in the normal retirement date. The Board of County Commissioners approved a public hearing during the April 13, 2021 meeting, and it was held on May 11, 2021. No comments were received. Discussion: The current calculation creates an administrative burden for actuarial calculations and does not provide a predictable normal retirement date. At the recommendation of Bolton Partners, an amendment has been drafted to change the calculation of years of service. The calculation is divided into two separate definitions, benefit eligibility service and service time. Benefit eligibility service would be used to calculate the participant's retirement benefit and does not include unpaid absences. Service time calculates when the participant is eligible to retire based on the date of hire and does not, does include unpaid absences. Fiscal impact? No fiscal impact. Conclusion: Staff recommends that the B O C C adopt and sign the 14th Amendment to the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners adopt and sign the 14th Amendment to the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan. Second.
I have a motion in the second that we adopt and sign the 14th Amendment to the Sheriff's Office Pension Plan. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next.
Old business item number two, Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment Disability Definition. Background: According to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan, the county and Board of Trustees are to determine if a member is totally and permanently disabled as defined by the plan. The Board of County Commissioners approved a public hearing during their April 13, 2021 meeting, and it was held on May 11, 2021. No comments were received. Discussion: Currently, the county uses the determination made by the long-term disability provider to approve a member as disabled. The definition of disability used by the provider is not the same definition provided by the plan. The Board of Trustees for the Employees Retirement Savings Plan have approved an amendment to this, to state total and permanent disability means a participant is awarded Social Security disability benefits. A member will be designated as disabled under the plan once they have received, have been awarded, Social Security disability benefits. Fiscal impact? No fiscal impact. Conclusion: Recommendation: Staff recommends the B O C C adopt and sign the Third Amendment to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners adopt and sign the Third Amendment to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan. Second.
I have a motion in the second that we adopt and sign the Third Amendment to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment, Director, if you would, please.
Yes.
And we talked about this before when it came up, the uniformity to the terminology that's used, can that be synchronized with other county departments such as the, the Treasurer's Office, so that that uniformity is there? Because there's been a person that retired from the Sheriff's Department that had some difficulties because of the way it was, the terminology was used, and, and to be able to qualify for a certain discount as far as the property tax.
Yes, and that is on the agenda for the upcoming trustees meeting for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Old business item number three, Employees Retirement Savings Plan Amendment Normal Retirement Date Definition. Background: The Calvert County Employees Retirement Savings Plan is a defined contribution money purchase pension plan for certain employees hired by the county on or on or after June 30, 1998. 627 county employees are members of this plan. Currently, the Employees Retirement Savings Plan defines normal retirement date as the first day of the month coincident with or next following the date on which the participant has attained age 65. When a planned participant reaches their normal retirement date, they are eligible for retiree health insurance. The Board of County Commissioners approved a public hearing during their April 13, 2021 meeting, and it was held on May 11, 2021. No comments were received. Discussion: The Fourth Amendment to the plan changes the current definition of normal retirement date to the rule of 80. The rule of 80 is a benefit provision used to determine if a planned participant is eligible for retirement benefits. The rule of 80 is reached when the combination of a fully vested participant's age and years of service equals 80 or more, and they are at least 55 years of age. Fiscal impact: Under the current definition of normal retirement date, 42 planned participants qualify. Adopting the rule of 80 would result in 10 additional planned participants reaching the normal retirement date. Bolton Partners estimates the increase in the actuarial determined contribution to be $212,000. Conclusion Recommendation: Staff recommends the B O C C adopt and sign the Fourth Amendment to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan.
Move to approve.
Second, Mr. President.
I have a motion, a second, that we adopt and sign the Fourth Amendment to the Employees Retirement Savings Plan. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is new business. Commissioner Wiens.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This comes to us via Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources.
I'm here, and I can read the memo.
Of course.
Okay. And this is from Andrea McDonald Fingland, Director of the Local Behavioral Health Authority. And I believe she may be present there with you today. Background: In July 2019, at the direction of the Maryland State Legislature, the Calvert County Core Services Agency, CSA, and the Calvert County Local Addictions Authority, LAA, merged to create the Calvert County Local Behavioral Health Authority, LBHA. This action was taken in conjunction with Maryland Annotated Code Health General Article 7.5-201, which created the Behavioral Health Administration, BHA. The BHA has since worked with local jurisdictions to integrate behavioral health systems management functions across the state. Discussion: Research has shown that not only does integrating behavioral health services and management save money by reducing duplication of administrative activities, it also improves care coordination for the individuals being served. When advisory council members assist the LBHA with managing both substance use and mental health programs and services in Calvert, services are more tightly coordinated, individuals with co-occurring disorders are served more effectively, and the needs of all Calvert County's residents are met in a quality, cost-effective manner. Bringing together such a diverse group of stakeholders has also assisted with ensuring that multiple perspectives are considered when making decisions about strategic planning, budgets, and vendor selection for grant programs. Fiscal impact: None. Conclusion Recommendation: It is recommended you authorize the Local Behavioral Health Advisory Council to change its name from Core Services to Local Behavioral Health Authority, and to coordinate amendment of its bylaws with the Maryland Department of Health before returning to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the amendments. And this is coordinated with the Office of the County Attorney. I don't know if Andrea wanted to say a few words.
Andrea, would you like to say something? Come on down.
Good morning Commissioners, and thank you so much for having me.
Morning.
So I think Jennifer read off the memo, which gives a good background. And we just ask that you consider the, that we are able to merge or get permission to update our bylaws in order to merge the, I believe they're the Local Mental Health Advisory Board and the Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council. We began meeting as a joint council back in December of 2019, and have been working together since that time in order to do the strategic planning for the local behavioral health system, public behavioral health system, as well as having them assist us with awarding grant funds to, to local organizations so that we could, again, better coordinate those services. So we've been meeting together for, coming up on a year and a half now. And the, the council members have already approved us exploring this action of making it a formal integration. So we just ask that you approve our ability to then go and finalize the update to the bylaws with the state of Maryland, with the county attorneys, and then ultimately with our council and with you guys. So if you have any questions, please feel free to, to ask them now because I, you know, I'm, I'm here to clear anything up if there's any confusion.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't see any questions. You did a good job.
Thank you.
So.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Local Behavioral Health Advisory Council to, one, change its name from Core Services to Local Behavioral Health Authority, and, two, coordinate amendment of its bylaws with the Maryland Department of Health before returning to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the amendment.
Second.
So I have a motion, a second, that we authorize the Local Behavioral Health Advisory Council to, number one, change its name from Core Services to Local Behavioral Health Authority, and, number two, coordinate amendment of its bylaws with the Maryland Department of Health before returning to the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the amendments. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Background: Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Squad's ambulance 48 was involved in a motor vehicle accident on April 3, 2021. It once has been inspected by the Rescue Squad's insurance company, who subsequently determined the ambulance to be a total loss. Discussion: Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Squad has worked with an ambulance vendor and determined that replacement costs for ambulance 48 will be $311,529. The insurance company's payment will be $272,753, which leaves a deficit of $38,776. Fiscal impact: The Department of Public Safety's Fire Rescue EMS Division has identified a funding source utilized in $38,776 in unencumbered funds within Prince Frederick Rescue Squad's FY 2021 insurance account. Conclusion Recommendation: Staff requests the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached budget adjustment BA 331 CIP, providing additional funding for the replacement of the Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Squad's ambulance 48. Mr. President, make a motion that we approve motion and approve, excuse me, and approve budget adjustment BA 331 CIP to provide the additional funding.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, that we approve the attached budget adjustment BA 331 CIP, providing additional funding for the replacement of the Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Squad's ambulance 48. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four oh. Let the record show Commissioner Hutchins was out of the room for that item. Next item on the agenda is item number three, new business, Commissioner Hart.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Background: The 2020 presidential election cycle was unsurpassed by any previous election. With the COVID-19 pandemic, new ways of conducting an election had to be utilized.
Commissioner Hart, it's item three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm ahead, I'm ahead.
Education.
It's the Board of Education.
Good morning Commissioners, Beth Richmond, I'm here to, I can read the memo if you would like.
Yes, ma'am.
It's probably better that you do.
I was on a roll.
I will try to do better. Beth Richmond, Deputy Director. Background: The Board of Education is requesting the Board of County Commissioners' approval of a budget adjustment. Intercategory transfers require the B O C C's approval. Discussion: The attached memo details the request. In summary, the Board of Ed requests to reallocate appropriation in the amount of $99,050 from the consultants' account in the constructional cost category to the consultants' account in the human resources program within the administration category. Fiscal impact: There is no fiscal impact to the county for this action. Conclusion Recommendation: We recommend that you approve the budget adjustment.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the budget adjustment for the school board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you Commissioners.
Next item on the agenda is Election Board, Commissioner McConkey or Commissioner Hart, whichever.
Budget Adjustment Request: The 2020 presidential election cycle was unsurpassed by any previous election. With the COVID-19 pandemic, new ways of conducting an election had to be utilized. This includes the procurement of personal protective equipment, the creation of ballot drop boxes, and the use of vote centers. This resulted in unexpected increased costs. Discussion: The State Board of Elections sent the second quarter fiscal bill of $170,825.07 for Calvert County's share of the presidential election. This includes manufacturing and delivery of ballot drop boxes, PPE supplies, mailing of mail-in ballot applications, ballots, and the use of a call center. We have received the third quarter bill of $35,796.89. The previous second quarter bill depleted our current budget funding. Fiscal impact: An additional $35,796.89 will be needed to added, need to be added to contracted services. Conclusion Recommendation: The Board of Elections recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached budget adjustment, number BA 340, in the amount of $35,796.89.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Board approves the attached budget adjustment BA 340 in the amount of $35,796.89.
Second. Have a motion, a second, that we approve budget adjustment BA 340 in the amount of $35,796.89. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five oh. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item five, Commissioner Hart.
That's that later. Background: The purpose of the contract is to provide maintenance of existing stormwater management devices or construction of the new stormwater management devices or both. This service has not been bid in the past, and because quantities are unknown, each line item is for a quantity of, quantity of one. It is anticipated the service will exceed 30,000 per fiscal year. This contract is for a one-year period with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms. Discussion: During the weeks of February 21, weeks of February 21, 2021, and February 28, 2021, advertisements appeared in the two local newspapers, the E. Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, the county's Facebook page soliciting bids for the reference contract. Eleven bids were received and opened during a virtual bid opening on March 23, 2021. The bid tabulation from the bid opening and the bid comparisons are attached. The bids were thoroughly reviewed, and the apparent low bidder, McKenzie Contracting LLC, meets all requirements of the specifications. Reference checks on McKenzie Contracting LLC provide satisfactory comments. In addition, McKenzie Contracting LLC has provided satisfactory services to the county in the past. Fiscal impact: Funding for this contract has been allocated in various Department of Public Works Contracted Service accounts and various capital project accounts. Conclusion Recommendations: In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Laws, it is recommended the Board of County Commissioners adopt staff's recommendation findings in Attachment A and award the unit price contract to the lowest responsive bidder, McKenzie Contracting LLC, St. Leonard, Maryland. Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
So I have a motion, a second, to adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the unit price contract to the lowest responsive bidder, McKenzie Contracting LLC of St. Leonard, Maryland. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Item six, Commissioner Hart.
Background: In order to accept and process recycling and waste materials, the Division of Solid Waste is responsible for providing economical and reliable equipment for daily operations. Discussion: The John Deere 4720 is 14 years old and has reached the end of its service life and dependability. Current market conditions require ordering a replacement now for delivery later in the year. There is sufficient funding in the solid waste equipment reserve account to support the purchase. The John Deere 4720 will subsequently take out or be taken out of service if a major repair cost occurs. Fiscal impact: There is no fiscal impact. The 49,664 will require a transfer from the solid waste equipment reserve account 31405 to the solid waste off-road equipment account 31201 with the planned replacement of funds in July from the FY 22 budget. Conclusion Recommendation: Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve BA 326 for the purchase of the John Deere 4066R compact utility tractor. Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve BA 326 for the purchase of the John Deere 466R compact utility tractor. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four oh. Let the record show Commissioner Wiens is out of the room for that item.
I think he wanted to keep the old tractor too.
No, he went to see if he could get the old tractor. Next item on the agenda is work session, and the first item is Office of the County Attorney, Local Requirements to Implement the Maryland Police Accountability Act. Commissioner Hutchins.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'll read the memorandum, but first all, the county attorney and I have worked together on this for going on probably almost a month now and even preceding that, once the legislation passed the General Assembly. Subject: Local Requirements to Implement the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, Police Discipline and Law Enforcement Programs and Procedures. Background: The purpose of this meeting is to present the local requirements imposed by 2021 Legislat laws of Maryland under Chapter 59, the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021, Discipline, Police Discipline and Law Enforcement Programs and Procedures. Discussion: This act makes various changes that generally relate to law enforcement. Of import to the county are provisions that relate to a statewide accountability and discipline process for police officers. Those provisions require the creation and standing up of a police accountability board and an administrative charging committee. For the police accountability board, the Board of County Commissioners, the board, is charged with, one, establishing the membership of and the budget and staff for a police accountability board; two, appointing a chair; three, establishing the procedures for record-keeping by a police accountability board. Each county is also required to have an administrative charging committee to serve countywide law enforcement agencies and local law enforcement agencies in the county. The role of an administrative charging committee is to, one, review the findings of a law enforcement agency's investigation; two, make a determination as to whether or not to administratively charge the police officer who is the subject of the investigation; and, three, if the police officer is charged, recommend discipline in accordance with the law enforcement agency's disciplinary matrix as specified; four, review any body camera footage that may be relevant to the matters covered in the complaint of misconduct; and, five, authorize the police officer called to appear before administrative charging committee to be accompanied by a representative; six, issue a written opinion that describes in detail its findings, determinations, and recommendations; and, seven, forward the written opinion to the chief of the law enforcement agency, the police officer, and the complaint. The presentation has been developed, and a draft ordinance has been prepared for the board's consideration, but no action is taken at this time. Fiscal impact indeterminate, will anticipate it to be significant. Recommendations and conclusions, the board is asked to consider the presentation, ask any questions you deem necessary and relevant, and direct staff how the board wishes to proceed. Mr. President, I yield to the county attorney, who is prepared to begin to walk us through the first half of this presentation.
Morning Commissioners, John Norris, County Attorney. There were a multitude of bills that were considered by the General Assembly, even starting back last summer. There were seven bills that made it through the General Assembly addressing law enforcement in one form or another. This is the only bill that made it through the General Assembly. It became Chapter 59 that has a local requirement, that is something for the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners to do, to react to. So it was introduced as House Bill 670. It was introduced by the Speaker of the House upon the recommendation of the Police Reform and Accountability at Maryland Work Group, which was comprised of 14 delegates that had been appointed by the Speaker of the House and chaired by the Honorable Vanessa Atterbury of Howard County. The act makes changes that generally relate to law enforcement, including altering the requirements for police officers during traffic stops, establishing higher education financial assistance for police officers. The fiscal policy note says that the local government expenditures are expected to increase significantly but are not quantified, so that's why we mentioned that in the memo. And we see on this slide, slide four, that the county has the obligation to adopt provisions that relate to a accountability board, is the last bullet there. First bullet is relating to civil liability, the Local Government tort Claims Act amounts have changed, and then the Law Enforcement Officer Bill of Rights has been repealed all through this one enactment that had been vetoed by the governor, and the veto was overridden the next day, April 10, I believe it was. So we said that it requires each county to have a police accountability board to the maximum extent practicable. That accountability board should reflect the racial, gender, and cultural diversity of the county in which it's located. The accountability boards hold quarterly meetings to approve matters of policing. They appoint members to charging committees, administrative charging committees, that is, and receive complaints of police misconduct that are filed by the public. Active-duty law enforcement officers must be excluded from being part of this police accountability board. The, um, next slide here. The obligations continue to review at least quarterly, but quarterly is the minimum requirement outcomes of disciplinary matters that are considered by the charging committees, and then by December of 31, submit a report to the Board of County Commissioners. And that report has to identify trends in the disciplinary process of police officers in the county and make recommendations of what changes should be made in policy that would improve police accountability within the county. Now, we've talked a lot about police officers. We all know that Calver County does not have a police force. It was probably 2010 that was an issue. We used the sheriff's office to enforce the laws with the assistance and of the Maryland State Police, and their definition of police officer that was used in this bill includes the sworn law enforcement deputies of the sheriff. So even though we don't have police officers, the definition that's used in this enactment covers the sworn law enforcement deputies. As noted in this slide, it does not include the sheriff, the head of, the superintendent of the state police, the heads of the local police departments. For instance, in Anarondo County, they have a police department. The chief of police would be excluded from this bill, just as the sheriff is. There are requirements for the police accountability board that were addressed in the memo. The Board of County Commissioners has to establish the membership of the accountability board, establish a budget, provide them staff, appoint a chair, establish the procedures for record keeping. The act also requires that the county have an administrative charging committee to serve as the countywide law enforcement agencies and also the local law enforcement agencies in the county. The act requires the county to, um, appoint members of that administrative charging committee that will receive training from the Maryland Police Training Standards Commission. The administrative charging committee has to perform certain tasks, review determinations from the law enforcement agency's investigation where there have been allegations of police misconduct, make a determination as to whether or not to administratively charge the officer who is the subject of the investigation. If the police officer is charged, recommended discipline should come from the administrative charging committee using the matrix agencies, the law enforcement agency's disciplinary matrix. There is a separate provision of this act that requires the state police training commission to adopt a matrix, establish a matrix, and then for each local law enforcement agency, each law enforcement agency in the state to then adopt that matrix. They review body camera footage that may be relevant to the matters that are covered in the complaint of misconduct. They authorize a police officer to be represented when they come before the administrative charging committee. They issue a written opinion that describes in detail their findings, determinations, and recommendations. Then they forward that opinion on to the chief of the law enforcement agency, the police officer, and the complainant. In addition to what they must do, they may do certain things like request information or action from a law enforcement agency, find that the allegations against a police officer are unfounded, or exonerate the police officer if they're not administratively charged, and they may record in writing any failure of supervision that caused or contributed to a police officer's misconduct. Because sheriff is a separate elected officer, constitutional officer, the administrative charging committee may have the closest nexus to the sheriff to be able to effect change closer than the Board of County Commissioners would be. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hutchins and to discuss the draft resolution.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. President, the crux of this 71-page piece of legislation that lies in, as far as our responsibility, lies in the creation of the two committees that council has talked about, the police accountability board and the administrative charging committee. Those are two things that we, we have to do and appoint. What we've designed here is a committee that is of nine persons. It keeps it agile, it keeps it effective, and it keeps it cost efficient to be able to use that. We'll discuss, um, they meet no less than quarterly. That means that's the minimum they can meet, but they'll also, and most likely, meet a lot more than that, especially in the first year of trying to ramp this up to be ready for the effective date of July 1, 2022. They will discuss improvements with the law enforcement agency heads as to what can be done different or added to in, in the issue of policing. Will appoint civilian members to charging committees and trial boards, and their reserved complaints, to receive complaints of misconduct, and on a quarterly basis, review those outcomes of disciplinary matters with the, than done by the charging committees. The slide that we will begin on, and you see up there is, um, number 21. And the board members shall reflect the racial, this is part of the law that specified, the racial and cultural diversity of the county. No active police officer may be a part of that. It's totally excluded to be civilians. The terms will be staggered, of which the county, or the council, uh, county's attorney has already worked up a method to integrate those in a staggered fashion, just as we talked about previously with the Veterans Board. 22, please. This goes into the first part, and that's the establishment and appointment of a chair person. That is the key individual. That person should have executive and command experience spanning of career at least 20 years, and why 20 years? The law enforcement officer bill of rights was created in 1978, and it stood that test of time for all these years up until this year. So we need a certain degree of understanding of what went before to have some basis of being able to, to properly administrate this act that we've been charged with doing. Its person should have a degree from an accredited college or university in pre-law, police administration, or criminal justice. That is critical, to have those academic credentials, as well as have completed the FBI National Academy or the FBI Executive Institute. And they are the key fundamental institutes that exist in this country by federal government that police officers from all around the country go to and all around the world. When I went through the Executive Institute, I had colleagues from heads of police agencies from Australia, from the UK, from Germany, and from Canada in there. So it's, it's a highly sought-after and highly recommended academic institution. There'd be three members of the board shall have command or supervisory experience in law enforcement. Again, to be able to have that understanding of what it is and how to deal with law enforcement officers, and have that background having been in command or supervisory position, where you have to make decisions, you have to charge people, you have to discipline people, you have to counsel people under your command. Likewise, to have an agree, a degree from an accredited college or university, again, preferable to have a pre-law, police administration, or criminal justice. At least one of these three should be a representative of a minority organization within the police agency, and quite notably as the National Law Enforcement Officers of Black Executive Organization, and in the Maryland State Police, the Maryland Black Troopers Coalition. It's also preferable that these three people have experience and have attended the FBI National Academy or the FBI National Executive Institute. We have three minority members, which shall represent the minority populations of the county as found by census. One shall be representative of the African-American community, one shall be representative of the Latin American community, and one shall be representative of the Asian community. And you see there on the slide the different elements within those various communities of different countries or sectors they may come from and emanate from. Two remaining members of the board should be practitioners. One shall be a practitioner in the field of mental health. It is extremely important in this day and time to understand the impact of mental health and behavioral health on law enforcement and likewise on the population that we encounter. One member shall be from the clergy, and she'll have experience as a military or public service chaplain. Again, understanding that element of both sides of what we have to represent. All, all the members will be subject to the Calver County Code of Ethics, and the members will be subject to a criminal history background check. If the applicants become convicted of a felony or a crime of moral perpetuity, they should be excluded, or if during their term they're found to have encountered those two situations or something related to them, they should be removed. The act will comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act, the board shall comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act and the general provisions of the Article Section, subsection 3, 101. And I'll be followed by counsel.
Thank you. The companion committee is the administrative charging committee, companion to the police accountability board. Their role is to perform mandatory functions, looking at law enforcement agencies, reviewing investigations, and make determinations whether or not the police officer will be administratively charged or not. If the police officer is charged, they recommend discipline in accordance with the agency's disciplinary matrix. Of course, I mentioned earlier, that's being standardized across the state by this legislation. The administrative charging committee gets to look at the body camera footage under this draft resolution. They will authorize the police officer that is called before them to be accompanied by a representative. They will issue a written opinion, as described in the legislation, that describes the detail, in detail its findings, determinations, recommendations. They'll forward that opinion to the chief, which would be the sheriff, could be the state superintendent, could be the local barracks commander for state police, could be natural resources police, could be Department of Transportation police. In executing their duties, they may request information under this draft resolution. If they are not administratively charging the police officer, they will either make a determination that the police officer, the allegations are unfounded, or the police officer is exonerated. They'll record in writing any failure of supervision of the, that may have caused to the police off, contributed to the misconduct complaint. To accomplish its mission, the board is asked to see public input on the creation of a five-member administrative charging committee. By state legislation, the chair of the accountability board would be the chair of the advisory, I'm sorry, of the, uh, accountability board, and that may be designated, but it's preserved for the chair of the police accountability board to make that determination whether or not they wish to designate someone else. And then the Board of County Commissioners appoints two citizens as members of the accountability committee. The accountability board makes two citizen appointments to the advisory committee, I'm sorry, the administrative charging committee. And before serving as a member of the administrative charging committee, every individual is going to receive training from the Maryland State Police Training and Standards Commission. All members should be subject to the ethics code. All members are going to be subject to the criminal background check, and just like the accountability board, if it's found that they are, when they apply or become during their term, convicted of a felony or a crime of moral perpetuity, then they may be removed or ineligible, depending on which is applicable. They too must comply with the Open Meetings Act. The provisions that allow for executive sessions, of course, are part of that Open Meetings Act, so that does not mean that all their meetings will be open, but there are provisions that allow for portions of their meetings to be closed under the Open Meetings Act. Commissioners will approve a budget for the accountability board that includes the allocation of staff resources. I gave you a provision in the draft resolution that allows you to create funding for contracted services, should you wish to give them money for contracted services to do studies. A stipend for members at $500 per member quarterly is provided for in the draft resolution. The administrative charging committee would be paid on a, um, budget determination basis, looking at the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Crime Prevention and Control for some funding to help assist there. Also looking at the GSA established rate for that fiscal year. The chairperson would approve all of the investigative meetings. So with that, I will ask Commissioner Hutchins to address why this is timely.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. President, colleagues, why we want to move forward on this when it's effective the 1st of July of 2022. I'll walk you through why that's necessary. On the 1st of July of 2022, we have to be ready to receive and act on complaints. And so in preparation in order to do that, I walked back through the different things that needed to be undertaken in a plan to get us in that position, so we're ready on that morning to take complaints and act on them as required by law. By quarter, from July 1st to September 30th of this year, we need to advertise a police accountability board applicants for at least 30 days, to give ample time for the public to be aware of this and to be able to apply for it, not the usual two-week type of thing. Determine the administrative support requirements, the personnel, facilities, and equipment. Preliminary budget discussions. Move appointees to the nomination of the board through that approval process. Process the employees or the appointees through the human resources, ethics, and criminal history background checks. Hold the first meeting and prevent, and present a police accountability board and an administrative charging committee structure. Appoint a chair and a vice chair, and review the rules and procedures of what orders will be followed. Next, from 31 October to the end of this year, initiate training on elements that pertain to the specific functions of these two entities, the police accountability board and the administrative charging committee. Have an introduction to the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission by the executive director of the MPTSC, to give an oversight and historical background of the MPTSC, to look at trends in the Maryland, in Maryland and the United States as far as complaints against law enforcement officers. And then to advertise and appoint the administrative charging committee and have that in place by 31 December, 2021. by 31 December 2021. First quarter of next year, introduction to the current law enforcement agency internal affairs units, the Maryland State Police, Administrative Services Bureau Chief, Internal Affairs, and the Public Information Office. Observations from the Maryland Attorney General's Office as far as police investigative processes and complaints, experience from the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association, the Maryland Sheriff's Association, and the Maryland State Troopers Association. And the final preparation quarter would be the second quarter of 2022, from April to June, presentations by non-government organizations who may represent minority populations or others, such as the NAACP, the ACLU, religious organizations, other recognized entities that have experience in assisting private citizens who have filed complaints against law enforcement agencies. Final review by supporting county departments would include the county attorney's office, the community resources, community, or the communications and media relations, human resources, and finance, the state's attorney's office, the sheriff's office, the Maryland State Police Barrack U for Calvert County. And then a final administrative requirements. That is a lot to do and a lot to accomplish in the course of time between now and the time July 1st, 2022, when we have to be ready to receive complaints and act on behalf of the parties that are making those complaints. It's a difficult process. It's not an easy one. It's not a well-understood one, especially for people that haven't worked in it or been exposed to it. So I think we've put together a pretty, pretty comprehensive board that can get it done efficiently, effectively, and cost, from the cost side also. But it's going to take a lot. We'll need to turn to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. We'll probably need to turn to our federal counterparts and ask them to see what federal monies may be available to assist us. But it's something that we don't have a choice. It's here, it's now, we got to do it. What this replaced was a law that had stood for 40 years. I worked in that, I was in the House Judiciary Committee and watched the different changes that occurred, but basically, for 40 years, one structure stood the test of time. So this is totally a different, opens up a lot of different avenues, but it's something we have to deal with. And I think we can deal with it very effectively on both sides, the law enforcement side and the citizen side. We have to do that. We don't have a choice to be able to be effective in how we deal with this across the board. So with that, counsel, do you have any follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, that's, that's the crux of it. If anyone has any questions, they're more glad to work with them with counsel.
Yep. Questions?
Do you want me to go first?
Whoever, none other than me. If you have questions.
I don't have a question as much as, boy, where to begin? So you're correct, Commissioner Hutchins, on a lot of this, this is an unfunded mandate. Just by that definition alone, makes me irate. I don't like blanket statements. I don't think Maryland, the country, any place can be just done with a blanket statement. But we weren't given that option. It has, you know, and it's going to be for the person that answers the call, to how it's proceeded, there's a whole lot moving here. And, and I understand what you're saying with the level of, of education and experience that's needed. I think everybody can understand, no matter what type of work that you do, whether you swing a hammer, turn a wrench, do whatever, if there's going to be a board that's going to supervise you or have, have input, and this board has teeth, make no mistake, this is not a joke, this board has teeth, this will affect livelihoods, it will affect budgets, it will affect how law enforcement proceeds in the future. You want a level of proficiency. I don't think there's anything more detrimental to a society's, to appoint a board that is not properly trained to take that task on. But there has not been a lot of guidance given. I know that time is, is not on our side on this, but I think community input is going to be vital for this. I, I, I think there's a lot of people from, we see the state's attorney out there, from law enforcement, community groups, we're going to need everybody's hand in the pile because if we don't have a total buy-in, the officers need to be able to walk down there and go, okay, I know this is the new world that we're in, but I'm comfortable. The community has to say, okay, I'm comfortable. Because it involves, and, and no disrespect to the rest of the state, I, it's not that I don't care about, this is, this is our piece of the pie, this is our world, I care about here. Our level of safety is premium. I've said it many, many times, that, that if the sheriff believes he needs something to keep us safe, I'm going to be all about it, you know, state's attorney, the judges, what have you, you, no matter, you got the best schools, the best home, but if we don't have a safe environment to live in, what's the point? But we're going to need everybody to buy in on this. I mean, this is something that's never been done before, you, like you said, what, since 1978, when that was put in? I don't think it can be done quickly, although we don't have a lot of time, I get that. But I think we're going to have to take whatever it takes to get it right. I don't believe that you put somebody in, so ultimately, it's going to be our fault if it's done wrong. Ultimately, the fault is here. I don't want to put somebody in a position that they get there and, you know, many times people have come to me, Mr. Commissioner, there's four officers, there's four cars on the side road, that way, it does not take four cars. We don't know that. If you haven't done that job, you're not standing in that situation, who knows, maybe there was a medical emergency, but we make that quick snapshot. And all of a sudden, that's the perception, and we've heard so many times, perception is reality. Well, this one here, perception's not going to be reality. Fact is going to have to be fact, and what to this is people's livelihoods. If somebody's been wronged, then absolutely, no one is above the law. But who is ever, I mean, and it's playing God on these boards sometimes. And to be given that type of authority and that type of power, if someone, I'm not saying that someone has got to have law experience or been a judge or lawyer, but I don't want to turn somebody loose on a board with no training at all. I think we need to provide some type of training or some type of vehicle so that they don't walk in cold to help them do a better job. And I don't think we're going to do this overnight, is my concern. And I know that there's a pressure to get this done, but it's got to be, it's got to be done right from the beginning because the state's watching. I think we throw, I think if, if the state doesn't believe we're doing this properly, I think they're going to come back with even harsher terms and I think even more pressure. So I don't want to say I feel like I'm being set up, but I think there's a little bait out there with very little direction. Let's face it, it's politics too, let's be honest. Every politician's out there scared to death to make somebody mad because they're afraid you're not going to vote for them to put them back. So if I go this way, well, this one's not going to vote for me, and I go, well, I don't really care about that because I plan living here a lot longer than I'm on this Board of County Commissioners, and I have children and family, and we all know everybody, whether they're in law enforcement or any, or whatever, so they're all, we all know each other. It's to be a fair board, and I can't stress enough, that everybody buys in and feels comfortable. And how to get there from here is going to take a minute, but I, I mean, Commissioner, I think you touch on a lot of things. I don't know if that much, that's, that's a lot of education and a lot of service, I don't know if we have that available to us out here. I don't know till we start kicking tires. You come from law enforcement, you know a lot more of what comes through in the training than I do, but I think we're going to need a, the community's got to buy in. It's not going to work if, if they, if they don't, just my, my personal opinion.
Well, in the response, you're absolutely correct. And, and that's why we need the time in these four quarters to be able to educate the community. Each one of these are open meetings. Every, every meeting they have is subject to open meetings. So that is an informative process, and in particular, trying to identify the segments of each, almost like semesters, of each of these four quarters that we're going through. And the other side of it is that there's no easy answer to it. You know, you've got, unfortunately, the potential for polarized issues here. That's why I think if we get out in front of this thing right now, we can lead in the issue, and most importantly, we can educate in the issue throughout the four quarters of the year that begins July 1st this year to July 1st of the next year. We don't have a choice but to be ready on July 1st, 2022, to receive complaints, because if we're not, that's when it becomes problematic for everybody, law enforcement, civilian complaints, the whole nine yards. It's, it's a, it's a monster to undertake in this shorter period of time. The committee, I don't know how often they met, those 14 people, how often they met, I don't know what they, they did as far as research or held meetings or that type of thing. But I've gone through that bill, and counsel has gone through that bill, and we've taken it apart piece by piece to try to figure out what's the best thing we can do to present it. And we've got those two requirements, a police accountability board and an administrative charging committee. And it's just trying to educate both law enforcement and, and civilians as we move forward in a very short period of time. We just uncovered in throughout 40 years. We got to recover it in, in one year.
What's going to be put in place for people to be, you know, people are going to be filing false complaints every time they get a speeding ticket? What's going to be put in place to, to, to put an end to that?
So once the law enforcement agency has finished its investigation, they'll refer it to the Administrative Charging Committee. The Administrative Charging Committee can exonerate or find that it was unfounded.
Will there be financial implications?
For complaints where we enjoy, as a local government, toward Claims Act protection in the amount of $400,000 per claim, per incident, the amount is, is going up significantly. It's more than doubled, it's 889,000, it was an odd, odd number, but it did go up significantly. And non-economic damages result, as a result of a death, has gone up significantly as well.
But, I mean, I don't know if I'm, I don't want to step on Commissioner McCaughy, but so, somebody, there's bad behavior in all walks of life, but somebody is unhappy with their speeding ticket, and now they want to file a complaint, well, that costs money. Is there, is there some type of financial repercussions to the person that filed this complaint? Because if
If it's unfounded.
No, the filing of complaints has gotten significantly easier by the state legislation.
What, and I don't know if this is what you're touching on, is, is there a fear that you could have 300 calls in a week?
It's kind of like if you, if you, if your alarm on your house keeps going off and there's not anybody breaking in, you now get a bill in the mail after so many of them. I mean, is there going to be any type of thing put in place to?
That's not provided for in the state law.
I mean, do we put a, a pressure on the state's attorney's office that now all of a sudden, they're trying to do their regular job and there's 40 complaints? I mean, I think that's what maybe alluding to, and what, what is the, and I, will this board have the power to filter that? Will this board have the power to say, okay, the complaint came in, but we don't deem it necessary to proceed? Or will all complaints have to go through the full two boards?
The complaints that are filed will be considered by the charging committee, whether they go in through the Accountability Board or they go in through the law enforcement side. But to get back to your initial question, to be fair, the state's attorney hasn't seen this draft until it went out with the agenda on Thursday. I can't say that it's not going to be a burden on the state's attorney's office, I can't say it's not going to be a burden on the Human Resources Department to staff these. We know there are going to be costs because these programs do not exist today, and they need to be stood up under, under the requirements of the state law, and it's going to cost money.
And, and we have seen, and, and I, look, I'm a fan of body cameras. I, I, you know, I've not talked to anybody from law enforcement that, that do not want the cameras. But we've seen a cost incur with that of reading of the film, have to send an investigator out. I mean, this could be a very, very costly procedure going forward, and I feel it will be. Back to my thing, once again, with this, this board is going to have an immense amount of power, and we're opening up a door that will never be closed again, like, say, you know, I want it fair for everybody involved. I mean, if, if somebody's been done wrong, then, you know, I mean, it has to be addressed, there's no doubt about that. But, you know, if I didn't like the ticket I got, well, you know, then don't speed. I mean, I don't, and, and I'm sure there's no provisions, it leaves everything on the table, I assume, right?
Correct.
From traffic tickets to a dog barking to anything enforcement-wise, I'm sure is on the tape.
Correct. Is the board's decision final, or is their decision appealable at another level? Is it appealable to us or appealable to circuit court?
The decisions of the Administrative Charging Committee will likely be appealable to the circuit court, but again, we're still
Right.
We're still digesting this legislation.
Okay. So it doesn't come back to us, is what I'm saying?
No, it's not going to come back to the, to the local commissioners.
And there's a, there's a separation, administrative charging. That's, that's carried out right now by law enforcement agencies in their internal process through internal affairs. If it's a criminal action or appears to be leading to a criminal action, is one the state's attorney is coordinated with. But a lot of it, like you talked about, for instance, the speeding ticket, somebody just figures, well, this is a way to, to help mitigate that or to complain about it or whatever. That's where administrative issues come into play, and they're solely administrative. So a public complaint's going to go to the charging committee? And the process is for it to go through that committee? And then does it go to the board for review? Nope?
No, the Administrative Charging Committee is to write reports that they submit to the Accountability Board. The Accountability Board meets quarterly with the local law enforcement agencies and comes up with a report to the Board of County Commissioners every year, annual report that says where they think the problems lie and how it might be best to correct that going forward.
So for internal issues, if an officer's disciplined in the current process, is that going to be reviewed by the Accountability Board?
It appears that way, yes.
So every internal action is now going to be reviewed by this Accountability Board to make sure that the office has done its findings are correct?
So long as the origin of the investigation is on the public side and not an internal, somebody spilled coffee on me, one of the other officers spilled coffee on me type complaint, yes, appears that way.
And we have three days to get this information to the law enforcement agency that the individuals involve.
So the law says we only have three days?
Three days.
Three days for the Accountability Board to receive that complaint.
It's probably a full-time job for somebody.
Five somebodies under this draft.
So, right now, for cameras, video, the state's attorney's office reviews for certain things, the sheriff's office reviews for certain things, is this committee going to see raw footage, or is there, do we know?
It's presumed that they're going to receive access to raw footage, but we truly don't know yet.
And, and with that said, that's going to be another body that will have to take that footage, cut it down to the segment, to have it prepared and ready to go. Boy, in one year? Wow. That's not a lot of time to put all these moving pieces together.
And just staff support for each of these two boards, board and commission, is also an unknown, because if you saw, the Accountability Board is required to allow the law enforcement officer to appear with representation. Does the charging committee also need counsel sitting with them when they conduct a hearing? Probably.
And that goes back to my, what's the unfunded mandate, it's the state notoriously does this with so many things, you know, this one size fits all, and it's like, we put it in, just like, just like when we were faced with medical marijuana on our last board. It was a touchy issue, a lot of people on both sides of it, zero direction. You had the federal government saying that it's against the law, but you had the state of Maryland saying it was legal with very little direction. It's, it's unfair to everyone involved, it's unfair to the community, it's unfair to the officers, it's unfair to, you know, it's, this, and the lack of direction just doesn't stop. I mean, and that
I mean, and that, that's why I say this does.
So do we know how many public complaints are filed against officers in Coward County annually?
Yes. But we haven't started that investigation, I should say.
Because I understand we have to have the process in place and all the pieces. I think we are fortunate that we're not like some other areas that, it is going to be a full-time job. I mean, I don't want to throw any names out there, but we know who they are. And this is going to be a full-time job in those jurisdictions.
Yes.
And with the background that Commissioner Hutchins has provided, we're going to have to offer sign-on bonuses too.
It's going to be a lot, yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's a lot of requirements, a lot.
Some smart people there.
Well, and, you know, $500, is that going to do it? I mean, we're throwing a number out there, you know.
That's the question. We'll have to, some of this is going to have to mature as we work our way through the process. We'll know more after we work through this four quarters in advance of it taking effect. And we'll probably have to revisit it, you know, at some point in time as to what is our administrative report, uh, support? You know, in, in the internal affairs agencies of each department, and especially in the state police, we had a huge internal affairs department. But I mean, there's a lot of unknowns has been, you've put your finger on it. A lot of unknowns that's been handed to us. And we put this thing together specifically without the input of the state's attorney or without the input of law enforcement. So no one could say, well, you just went to them, they did what you wanted to do. Uh, it's put together very methodically and we've worked on it for better part of a month, not even counting the time of reading the legislation that was processed. So it's, it's a complex piece and there's still a lot of moving parts that are not clear, but we'll, we'll just have to adjust to them.
But.
Funding is going to be critical, governor's office and as well as federal funding.
And that, that going back to, and I know I'm hard on it, everybody's going to have to buy in on this thing or it's not going to work. Because if, if we don't have community support on this, then that board, just like you just said, they're going to say, oh, it's a stacked deck. You know, but I don't want to prohibit an officer from wanting to do his job. You know, and officers out there, you don't want to have them scared to death to do their job. We're seeing this in other parts of the country. Right now, officers are leaving in groves, you know, and, um, so, wow.
Policing is, it's in a way similar to the military service. You got to want to do it. You certainly can't be compensated adequately for it. You got to want to do it because it's the right thing to do for society as a whole. And so it's, it's that premise that you go forward when you make a decision to be, in my case, to be a trooper. Uh, it's just what it's based on. And I can remember my first day reporting for duty at Waldorf Barrack and the barrack commander was Lieutenant Colonel, was Venn, Lieutenant Evans. And he said, you have more power than the president of the United States. I'll never forget those words. You can take somebody's freedom away with several words. You are under arrest.
And that, and that's very, very true with, you have to want to do it, but, but here's the thing too. There's still human beings with families and mortgages and college payments and trying to live the same life that everybody else does. And so just take profession A, whatever that is. Normally, a lot of times you hope it's your passion, you know, you hope that the job that you do in life is what you wanted to do, not what just you have to do, but which many Americans have to do. But say you, you are fulfilling your dream and now all of a sudden, there's a board that can take that away. If it's self-inflicted, fine. I, I'm a big fan of, you know, hey, self-inflicted wounds are self-inflicted wounds. If somebody comes out here, no matter what job they're in, and they violate that, and they know they violate that, no one's above punishment or above the law. But, you know, you just want to make sure that that officer, if they're going to get hurt in the pocket, if they're going to get hurt in their career, terminated, what have you, um, it can't, it can't be anything arbitrary. I mean, it has to be, you know, it has to be, um, they violated the law. And, um, that's, boy, it's a slippery slope because you know the training. I don't. What the training states is not what the normal public that has not been trained understands. How many times have you heard the statement, why wasn't, why was a weapon discharged 12 times or 13 times or what have you? You know, where the, the normal human mind says, why wasn't it one time? And you can correct me on the training to, because you went through that. But I believe it states something like to immobilize a target or something very generic like that. You, you could, you know, doesn't list a number of times a weapon's discharged. And a, a person's going to sit on this board and say, the weapon was fired 12 times. Why? You know, and, and, and all these things. So is the training going to sync up with what these boards are? And that's why I say it's such a big conversation too, because I, I'm not an officer. I've never been trained. I don't know what that academy says to do. What is, you know, so is the officer following exactly, like you said, in the military where the guidelines? I mean, you know, it's going to have to sync.
That, that, uh, the Maryland police, I sat when I was superintendent as the chair of the Maryland Police Training Commission. And the Maryland Police Training Commission has been around since about 1971, 72, somewhere in that timeframe, maybe a little earlier. But they're the ones that set the standard for the state of Maryland as far as training. It doesn't make any difference if you're a Baltimore city policeman or Prince George's County or deputy sheriff in one of the other counties, uh, or a state troop. It, it sets the standard of training. And whether it's this board or whether it's the police agency, they're going to look at the same questions you just asked. They'll ask those questions and how did it match up with training? What were the circumstances? All of those types of things have to be dealt with and countered. But what's before us right now is a decision as to whether we want to lead on this, give the public four quarters worth of exposure to this. So like come July 1st and somebody makes a complaint, both law enforcement officer that may be involved or the civilian that may be making the complaint can feel pretty satisfied or comfortable, at least at that point, that we've done our preparation to the best of our ability with what's been cast upon us.
Well, I think with a minimum today, we need, we need to get a committee together to start gathering information. I mean, we have, we have to do that. We have got to set up avenues for the community to be able to speak. And, you know, input from everybody who's got a stake in this, which is all 90,000 people here.
And that's what this does. That's what these four quarters do.
To, to, uh.
These four quarters outline the key components that this board and administrative charging committee is going to need, as well as the civilian side is what they're going to need.
The only thing is I don't want to be too restrictive though, because, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but the guidelines in there state only these type of folks. I want the community to have an input, everyone to have an input of how this board should be put together.
Do you, do you mean that the way it's set up?
Yeah, I don't know you're going to find somebody with that amount of experience. Not that I'm saying that you wouldn't want, you would want the most experienced people. I don't know if you have. I don't know till we kick the tires. I don't know if we have them out there.
With him starting this early, that might be, uh, to see it again.
But I think, I think we need to be very flexible and listen to all of it before we, you know. So I don't, I don't want to put absolutes in place today.
You have to start somewhere. You have to start with something. Because every day that we lose is a day less that we have a chance to go through all of this education and preparation for the execution date or implementation date of July 1st of next year.
So even though we're going through all that, we're not going to implement it until we absolutely have to, right?
We wouldn't be implemented until July 1st. They couldn't take any action. What we can do is do all this preparation in advance. This is all.
So we wouldn't have to pay the board members six months prior?
Yeah, we should. As soon as, as soon as you appoint the board, that's an action that triggers. And, and like we said, $500 a quarter. Now, they may meet a whole bunch in a quarter, but it's $500 a quarter. For instance, right now, uh, the Board of Appeals, zoning appeals and the planning commission are $500 per meeting.
Right.
This is $500 per total quarter is the way it's set up. Now, the accountability, the administrative charging committee is, is the appropriate way to approach that is by a per diem basis on a GSA rate. So that's, it's a lot easier to look at per diem.
Of course, my first thought was, don't have, don't pay the money till we absolutely have to, but.
I, I think we got to in order to, once we get them on, in order to go through this, these four quarters of training and preparation, I think we've got to, you know, we're asking a lot of these people. This, this is not going to be an easy board.
Right.
This isn't something you can not do your homework on.
Boards, like you said, being a police officer, it's going to be something you want to do.
Yep. And it's, it's intense.
Right.
And it's intense and the, the chair is appointed for six years. There's a reason for that. That is to make sure that continuity because it requires a lot of a chair. And to make sure that continuity stays in place as the board begins to turn over and people get to cry out.
With the performance of that, uh, the chair, can you, are they, are you able to remove them?
Ability to remove a board member.
We set up the committee. We would have the ability to act on the committee. But this is something that, you know, there's a lot there you don't know. But you've got to start somewhere and that's what it is about, starting. If we don't start, we're going to be way behind on this and it's going to take a lot of catch-up. And we won't be able to air four quarters worth of meetings with the intensity that's mapped out here. Commissioner, anything you want to add?
John, could you go to, or, or Justin, uh, slide number four? And this is for the purpose of having the, the, uh, community. And, and I'm being slightly redundant with some of the, the previous con, uh, comments. But adopting provisions that relate to a statewide accountability and discipline process for police officers. We don't have a statewide, correct? I mean, this is for the purpose, I mean, for the public to understand. Because 1% make decisions, 9% follow the 1%, and 90% say, what, what, what the heck just happened? So I just want to press upon the public specifically that, that we have none, nothing in place. This is a empty canvas.
This is a blank canvas. That's correct.
So I understand, you know, Commissioner Hutchins is initiating a concept. And this will be worked and, and the four quarters of exposure you speak of. Um, I just want the public, you know, to know, I mean, my 20%, I can't speak for the others. You know, I have an agency relationship on a macro level and a micro level where I exact care, obedience, loyalty, disclosure, accountability and confidentiality. So with that said, I, I want to publicly state that, you know, public hearings are a must on this and we need to extract information. So, um, that component of it, um, is what I want to impart mostly. Because what I see, you know, we have the honorable Robert Harvey, we have the honorable Sheriff Evans. Um, in the back, the public is, is the third piece that we haven't, you know, I, I want input from them, of course.
To be fair, they haven't had a chance to give input in this.
And I know, and I want to hear them as well. I'm not trying to put them on the spot today. This is for informational purposes from my perspective. But they need to be heard as well. So we'll have multiple work sessions on this. It could be, you know, prior to the four quarters of exposure. I mean, we, we may need to have one at the next meeting. I mean, that's just, you know, we'll, we'll get input today. But, uh, we just need to be fluid with this. That's just about 20%.
The process itself that we normally follow as a board with anything would take us to a work session, to, uh, new business, to public hearing, to action on the board. So we're out there already pushing close by the time those, those actions happen, close to July 1st anyway. So it, it's going to take a while just to move the agenda through here as a board to get to this point. So for my part, I appreciate all the effort and time that Commissioner Hutchins and Attorney Norris have put into this. And it's a starting place, but, you know, I do agree with Commissioner Hart. You know, I view this, I mentioned earlier, this is sort of like a comprehensive plan process for me. Uh, you know, I want, I want to hear public about the makeup of the board. I understand completely why you have requirements, educational requirements and experience requirements. I, I get that completely, but if I'm being honest today, I think there are segments of the public that are going to look at that proposal and say, it's too many police on there. Because that's what's gotten us where we are. They don't trust the police to police themselves. But if we put this proposal out on the street and the citizens of Coward County say, we're good with this, we understand why you're doing it, then I'm good. I just want to make sure that as important as Commissioner Hart alluded to, that public has some input into the makeup of this board so they have confidence and there's a balance on there that the officers have com- confidence that they're going to be treated fairly. Uh, we put, today, we put our police in an untenable situation. We ask our police officers, put them in situations where they have to make split second decisions over their life and death of citizens. And then we review the body camera footage at a hundredth of a thousandth per second and say, you know what, he might not have been going to do what you think he was going to do. And then we take him to court and we charge him. But that's, that's part of the process, no matter where you are. Whether you have this board or you had it under the law enforcement officer Bill Rice.
Right.
The body camera footage gets examined. The state's attorney looks at it if it's a criminal action, obviously. Those things exist today. This isn't new. This isn't any surprise. What we've got here is a short fuse in which to act on. And the process we have as a normal board, moving legislation through the normal board, gives that chance of exposure and discussion. Whether somebody, and that's why we didn't consult anybody as far as outside or inside law enforcement with structure of this board. It's based on, you've got five people that are not law enforcement related. And you've got four that are because somebody's got to know what's occurred in the past as to what conduct looks like, good and bad. You know, I've fired people because they weren't good. And I've given people reprieve because they made a mistake, but there was other circumstances involved that may have caused that. And it all goes back to, to training too. I've shut total operations down and retrained everybody and put them back out there again. So it's, it's for I-95 issue when I walked into superintendent. Governor Ehrlich, great governor, supported me on every move I made. So it's those kinds of things, but time is not our ally on this. A year will pass by so fast that it's just incredible. And the bottom line is be ready, just like President Bush said. Good evening after the September 11th attacks, I have a message for our military. Be ready. And that's the message it sent to us right now. Be ready.
So gentlemen, next action?
Great. We do have an eight-page resolution that's, that's got all of our best thoughts, but we don't know what we don't know. We would like some direction from the board as to how to proceed, uh, in this endeavor so that we can move as quickly as and as prudently as possible.
Oh, we're going to need to have, appoint some people to start putting this together, whether they're department heads or somebody to start gathering times for input and, um, first Director Willis. My 20%, that falls to you to start putting this together. Um, and, uh, like Commissioner Williams said, it may be a weekly thing. Um, it's new, never addressed it before. I mean, um, at the end of the day, right, the perfect scenario is this thing never gets one complaint and everybody's safe and everybody's working together. But that's not always reality. That's what you hope for, but, you know, but like I said, it's mandated to do. So my 20%, um, Director Willis is to put a team together to start gathering the information and the, and the people that, that have input on this. And to me, that's all 90,000 people. That's the only way it works is if every community member says, you know what? I, I, I filed a complaint. It didn't go to where I got a fair shake. I filed a complaint. It did go somewhere. I got a fair shake. But I, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, um, everybody, everybody. But I, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, everybody, everybody putting their hand in the pile is the only way it works.
You, you have to lead in life, you know? You have to step out there and lead in life. And that means we can't canvass 90,000 people and get anything done. Let's put something out for 90,000 people to look at and then come back to it.
Well, and I don't mean a referendum.
That's what he was saying.
Yeah, I don't mean a referendum, Tim, but what I'm saying is 90,000 people is the sum of the parts here, right? So, if, if, if one segment of, of our community, take a business segment, says, oh, this is unfair or, or private sector or whatever, anything, then it doesn't work. So, everybody's gotta have buy-in in my 20% for it, for it to work. And, and, and I would think that the police, if I was an officer, I would want that. I would want the community supporting me.
At least, at least doing the outreach so they know.
Well, the, the outreach is in our process.
But you've already established the boards at that point. If you adopt this resolution, you've already.
We haven't adopted it yet. We've got a whole process to go through. We have new business, we have time to air it, so it's gonna take at least three, four sessions to even get to that point in public hearing.
Correct.
That's the process that exists today. Then there's the process that laid out to get this board because we don't have any choice on that. We're gonna have to have a board. And this, and to get this board educated, open to the community through the four quarters, ramping up till the day it's implemented. Because if it's not fully vetted in education and process, come July 1st of 2022 and there's a complaint comes in, we've got a mess on our hands. Then it is our responsibility. Right now, we're tasked with two major things. Create a police accountability board, commit, create administrative charging. And in doing that, there's a hole and sundry of things of administrative support around it that has to be done.
Commissioners, if, if I may, Mark Willis County Administrator, from what I'm hearing from both sides is, is certainly a layout of the process that we need to get to by next July. But also, the commissioners would like to, this presentation was really for you because it was a work session. It was not meant to go to the public for interaction. What I need to do from here is to take the information discussed today, put it in another format that, that then does go out and give, starts to look for that buy-in from the public. I can bring that back with the county attorneys to help assistance by June 8th, which is the next time that we meet. So, I think we keep it going until we get it right and then we, we will have both satisfaction from the board and from the public.
It's a normal legislative process, same as we work through any, any other item that's complex. TDRs or whatever.
So, right now, we'll look, be, come back with another work session, one geared more for the public, but for your review on June 8th.
Maybe a plan of how we're gonna move through that process.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And, and we'll have discussions between now and then with yourself just to make sure.
Because this clearly lays out, you know, once we adopt.
Yeah, once we adopt it, then we got a plan.
Yes, I'm looking at the plan of how we get to adopting a resolution.
Okay.
Okay? Because, you know, our normal process is we advertise public hearings, people may or may not see them. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, and.
And this is important enough that we need to go the extra effort to make sure that, you know, at least certain organizations are advised of what's coming and give them an opportunity to weigh in.
Absolutely.
Well, we've got for CMR, we, we've got the basis of that through what we just did here today and bringing it to a work session.
Yep.
So, this is a little lengthy to go into, I'll make it very short. But what I've learned, having gone through my first census update, specifically being part of it, is that I liked the, what the, the, the national census effort was to reach very small groups that almost never get fully reached. So, we're gonna use that format going forward so that everybody in the county at least has heard about it and has the opportunity to show up if they choose to. If they choose not to, of course, that's their right as well. So, we're gonna take that approach to reach out.
And we are at a timeline because it is a lot of work, as was mentioned, but I wanna make sure we do it right. Because that's the key part, you know, getting the foundation right.
Everybody in here wants it done right. I mean, it doesn't make any difference who you are. You know, at some point in time, you're gonna come into contact most likely with law enforcement at some point. And the law enforcement comes into contact every single day with some element of the community. So, it's just, you know, it's, what's laid out here is a stark point, at least we can say. Here's a version.
Yep.
That's efficient, effective, and the plan going forward with four quarters should be informative.
Okay, very good, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on my work session, Department of Planning and Zoning, the TDR Committee Recommendations.
That's mine, I think, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it is, Commissioner Hutchins?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. TDR Committee Recommendations, TDR Bank Funding Option Background. The Board of County Commissioners requested to reconvene the Transfer Development Rights TDR Committee that originally met back in 2015 with text amendment number 15-02 for the TDR sliding scale was where the TDR sliding scale was proposed and adopted. In 2020, a new text amendment 20-02 was proposed to change the sliding scale. TDR requirements to be more equitable in terms of housing type and therefore an increase in some, in some of the requirements. The text amendment was presented to the Planning Commission and they did not agree with the text amendment moving forward at this time, but asked that it be evaluated within the Prince Frederick Master Plan Update Process. The Board of County Commissioners requested the TDR Committee review the TDR program and make recommendations for the board to consider. The TDR Committee developed a package of recommendations that if enacted together would reinvigorate the TDR program and increase participation. The recommendation was presented to the board in a work session on March 9th, 2021. The board directed the committees and staff to further develop the recommendations, come back with an additional information. Discussion, the TDR Committee met on March 29th, 2021 and discussed their primary objective moving forward is to confirm long-term funding for the TDR bank. The TDR Committee requested staff meet with the Departments of Finance and Economic Development to discuss funding operations for the bank. Staff prepared a work session, presentation of options for long-term funding for the TDR bank with the support of the TDR Committee. That's a lot of TDRs. The potential physical impact will occur depending on if the board moves forward with one of the TDR bank funding options as proposed. Conclusion and Recommendations. Staff recommended the board review and discuss the TDR's committee list of TDR bank funding options and direct staff how to move forward. Mr. President, we have a presenter here. Go ahead, Richard.
Hi, Commissioners. Good afternoon, I'm Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner with Planning and Zoning. I'm gonna skip our background slide as that was mostly reviewed in the memo. The purpose of today's work session, after the initial work session on March, March 9th to review the TDR Committee Recommendations, the BSCC directed staff to return and develop the recommendations and return with more information. Today, we'll be reviewing options for TDR bank funding that will allow the bank to operate as an ongoing revolving fund. I would first like to review the committee's main concerns regarding the TDR program and their package of recommendations that we reviewed on March 9th. Program is out of balance between the supply and demand of TDRs. The TDR price is inaccurate due to this imbalance of the supply-demand, which is left up to the free market, which drives the TDR price down, which is an inaccurate true value of the TDR for the farmer. Completing TDR transactions is difficult, time-consuming and costly because of the private negotiations that are unreliable. And the county's land preservation program is suffering from a moratorium placed on the creation of new APDs that has been in place for years because of the TDRs have been stagnant. So, the package of recommendations that the TDR Committee came up with, first being to establish the TDR bank to be managed by the county, to reinstate previous level of land preservation program funding, to retain the current TDR sliding scale, to lift the moratorium on creation of new APDs after the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board's recommended program changes are adopted into the rules and regulations, continue to allow density to be increased with use of TDRs within Tier 3, expand the rural legacy areas to include all the priority preservation areas, and to continue to waive TDRs for projects that meet senior affordable and workforce housing criteria. So, after the initial work session with the BCC, we had additional meeting with the TDR Committee and we met with Finance and Budget and Economic Development and came up with a list of options for you to consider and I will run through those now. Number one is the general fund loaned, as recommended by Finance and Budget. We'll go through the scenario of borrowing 2.5 million upfront and paying back 500,000 from the annual allotment from the general fund of 1 million that normally funds par on an annual basis. This would leave 500,000 a year to fund the purchase and retirement program until the 2.5 million alone would be paid back in full. This is not a popular option with the TDR Committee because it does affect the annual funding for par, which they, they would like remain separate. Number two is to request bonding authority. Establish the TDR bank as a pilot that we talked about in the initial work session with the available seed funds available through fund balance and request use of bonding authority to continue to fund the bank in the future. This is the TDR Committee's number one choice to be able to accomplish the goal without affecting the budget balance. If the TDR bank was implemented using bonding, we would have to pay back the annual debt service, which would be the principal and interest. If we were to look out an example of 2.5 million with 2% over 15 years, this would require an annual payment of 198,000 for a total amount of 2.9 million. Number three involves another one of the TDR Committee's recommendations to reinstate previous level of land preservation funds, which is to reinstate the recidation tax. The original proclamation that was increased, that increased the recidation tax from $3.30 to $5.00 for every 500 collected was the difference to fund land preservation. That was the amount of $1.70 of every 500 collected. So, here I have a table of the total recidation tax income from years 2010 through 2020 and if the division of what, the amount that would go toward the general fund and the amount that would go toward land preservation. Over the last 10 years, total recidation tax has been between 5 and 9 million and the amount that would go toward land preservation is in the neighborhood of 1.7 to 3 million. This option would allow the annual land preservation budget to not only fund the TDR bank, but also the purchase and retirement program and other land preservation efforts like matching funds for state grants. Number four, Finance and Budget recommended reinstating a portion of the recidation tax. This would be set a base and then anything over that, that would come in through, then come over the, the recidation tax would go through land preservation. Finance and Budget recommends starting with the number of 7 million. So, we have the same table, the amount going to general fund is 7 million and then anything over that is what would go to land preservation. Years 2010 through 2015, there, there wasn't enough, so there wouldn't be anything going toward land preservation. But then you can see in the good years from 2016 to 2020, there was additional funds that, that would be able to fund land preservation. Option number five, staff proposes with BSCC approval approaching the Calvert County Economic Development Authority, the EDA, to seek financing to fund the TDR bank. If approved, the EDA would play a key role in helping preserve farms while working with landowners to promote appropriate economic development in town centers. This fits the scope of the EDA to create a sustainable platform for a county legacy program. Recommendation and conclusion. This time, I'd like the BSCC to consider the funding options as, as we've gone through and direct staff how to move forward. I'd like to remind the board that staff still recommends moving forward with the TDR bank as a pilot project using the seed funds of 1.5 million from fund balance. If the pilot shows interest, these options considered, as presented today, can be included in next year's budget and maybe not one of these options, but a combination. As we reviewed in the initial work session, next steps, the TDR Committee will continue to work on implementation, implementation details of the TDR bank and staff could be able to roll out the TDR bank in the beginning of fiscal year '22. The Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board is working on their draft of recommended changes for staff to be able to present in the next couple of months. And then Planning and Zoning staff is also developing a draft of the rural legacy area expansion proposal for you to review in the next couple of months as well. At this time, I will open it up for questions.
Ms. President?
Just, so, you know, we've, we've talked about the bank before and we, we, I thought we had talked in the context of a pilot to see if it really will work. And so, I guess for me, you know, taking a portion of the par funding that's already in the budget, a seed money, because the revolving fu, the bank's gonna revolve, so it's gonna keep itself replenished. So, you would make sales as you have funds replaced. I guess the question is, starting out with a million or a million and a half and then just to determine what the volume's gonna be as you move forward, if you have to increase that or not. So, for me, I'm not excited about more bonding or borrowing money to fund this program. I would just use existing budget to start the pilot and see if the bank works.
Which, which numbers are, Mr. President?
Gosh, I lost track of the numbers. It was like number four or three.
Commissioners, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. So, we have 1.5 million dollars in the par fund that we can put for, to the bank. But the TDR Committee was a little concerned because what if this is wildly popular? Then we only have 1.5 million dollars and we're gonna be turning people away or having limit the number of TDRs. So, that's why we wanted to have something in the background. If we are wildly successful during the pilot, then we can continue on with this bank.
Well, I was looking at number three and, and, and I actually, actually just, you know, for discussion, obviously, but it seems like that's been a steady stream. Obviously, it's all been going to the general fund. But does that look like that would be a sufficient funding source to keep up with what we know?
And if you look back at the history, when they implemented that, that was the purpose. It's never really been done like it was intended. Like as Commissioner Hart said, the money just got dumped into the general fund and then every year was discretionary how much money the commissioners put into the par account. But I think we should consider dedicating that money for the source as it was intended when that was done. I mean, that was, the whole intention of raising that tax was to fund preservation.
I mean, I think if, if three suits that purpose, I, I'm like you, I don't wanna bond it. We had that discussion with everything bonding, but does, does it look like three would be a sufficient funding source?
Time will tell how much interest we have.
Maybe we could start there.
Director, can you, can you explain to public, you know, reinstate the recidation tax?
So, we, when the changes were made for the amount of money that was gonna go towards land preservation through the transfer ta, by increasing the transfer tax, the Board of County Commissioners each year just decided to give us an amount of money for land preservation, us being planning and zoning, to do purchase and retirement. And so, it was never a percentage. It was never that amount that went above and beyond. It was just a whatever was decided during the budget cycle. So, we would like to have a defined amount be reinstated.
And I guess, just, just so the public is clear, we're not reinstating a tax. The tax is already in place, it's just how.
Right, it reads that way, right. Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Because they were calling it the buddy handstand.
I know, they probably would, but the tax is not gonna change.
No.
It's just how the funds are allocated that are collected, the revenue that's collected through the tax.
Yes.
Is what, we, we wanna be clear that the public understands.
Correct.
And it's just that increase in that tax that was implemented 25 years ago.
The dollar 70, yes.
Is the, this is, is option three, was that we as a group say, okay, that's gonna be the policy. That, that percentage of change is gonna be dedicated to TDR retirement or the bank, however it gets framed up moving forward so that it's not discretionary. It's always discretionary, but yes, that would be option three. And then the other issue is, how much do we start, use as a, to start the pilot of the bank?
That's right.
Well, if you have that seed money, if you have that one five, and then you start it, I guess, obviously, the first allocation of this would be next year's budget because this budget is finalized for the most part. What am I saying that right?
Yes.
So, I guess in '22, this would start to fund that. So I guess in '22, this would start to fund that. So it would, if I'm saying that correctly.
That's correct.
So we would have one and a half to get started.
Right.
And then as this goes, I mean, let's face it, we, this fund could fill up quick with all the building and buying that we've seen. I mean, every time you record something, but it's not like Commissioner Hart said, you know, it's not a tax to the homeowner, it's, you know.
So the actual implementation wouldn't start until fiscal year '23?
We, of the recordation tax, correct?
Yes, yes. We've got the million and a half now in '22 that we can reallocate.
Yes.
But as far as adopting the change to the recordation tax, that wouldn't come into play until fiscal year '23.
Correct. And I think to make that change for the allocation to the fund, it would require a public hearing.
Yeah, and we would do that through the normal process.
So is that a consensus you'd need, Mr. Attorney, to pick one, and not a motion today, but just a consensus, correct?
No, that's the purpose of the work session is to figure out what the board, how do you want to proceed.
So I, I, I would be good with three if we think that would, would take care of it.
What is the current recordation? What, what is it?
The, the amount that we bring in is $5 for every 500 collected toward recordation fees.
And that's not changing that?
That's not changing, no. So just, just the change in allocation for where the funds go when they come in from, so that 170 of the five would go toward land preservation. The rest would still continue to go to the general fund.
You've got, on slide five, you've got seven recommendations. You know, you want to walk through them?
The committee recommendations?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I ran through those at the beginning of the presentation, but I can certainly walk through them again. If you guys do decide to move forward with number, option number three, that is one of the committee's recommendations in their package to reinstate the previous level of land preservation program funding to that amount that would come through the reallocation of the recordation tax.
Okay, but you got some others there. Do you want to expand upon them?
You ran through those, right?
I did, yes. So those recommendations were what we went over in detail in the initial work session. We are continuing to work on the others that we'll be returning to the board for additional work sessions to cover.
Well, I remember in the original work session, we talked about new APDs, and we talked about specifically types of land that we're looking at.
Yes, so new, new APDs were currently focusing on working with Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board to make recommendations to change or make updates to the rules and regulations for the program that oversee and manage the APDs in order to lift the moratorium so that we can accept new, new APDs. And, and that's what, those, those changes include coming up with new criteria for the type of properties that we want to focus on bringing into the program.
Okay, so where are you with that piece?
The APAB is going to be meeting at the beginning of June to finalize their recommended draft with the changes, and then we'll be preparing a work session to present those changes to you.
Okay. And Madam Director, the, the term bank, as I told you before and mentioned in the last time you all were here with us, the term bank has a specific connotation there that, that we're getting into a business that we may not, should be not entering into. We're entering into a brokerage is what it amounts to.
Want to call it a savings plan?
Well, they didn't that either.
Credit union?
It's not insured by the FBI, CCA, and the rest of them. It's insured by us.
So we called it a bank just because we're going to be purchasing the TDRs as the county and then selling them to developers as they need them for use to transfer development out of the rural areas into the town centers. But certainly, we could call it whatever we wanted.
It's more like TDR brokerage.
Yeah, it's, it's the operation of, of what you're doing is what's important there to, to be able to, because now we're inserting ourselves into a program even deeper than what we were in the par. Now we're a buying and selling.
True.
You know, and, and that's a difference. So I, I think that needs to be very clear when you lay this out.
Okay, and the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, in the event that we buy up a whole lot of TDRs and there is just nobody looking to purchase them, then we would be coming to you to retire them eventually. So maybe there is a different term we can come up with instead of bank.
And, and that's the, the final option, and that's the benefit, because the par does one thing, and that's all it does, is take density off the board.
Right.
Doesn't do anything else. That's what it's about.
Yep.
And, and so the end result is, you got 12,000 TDRs out there now. I don't know what your new APDs would open up, but in the end result, you're probably going to have to retire TDRs on some kind of basis.
Yes.
At, at some point, rather than just sitting there holding the stuff. So think about that also, would you?
We will, absolutely.
Yep, that's all I got.
You ready for?
Well, it's a work session, so.
You want to, to proceed with three?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that's what, I, my 20% was to go ahead with three.
So I think the direction we're giving you is to use the one and a half million out of the current allocation to seed the bank, and then next year, we'll implement the recordation tax as policy in the '23 budget moving forward as a funding source.
Yes.
A dedicated, dedicated funding source solely.
Yes, which was always the original tent. They just never codified it for whatever reason, but at least that's what they said in the newspaper all of this. All right, we're good?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment. I know we got three people.
There are no callers.
There are no callers. No callers.
Thank you. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Hudson's?
I've had enough. I've had enough.
Commissioner Hart?
I just want to send out my condolences to the friends and family of Mr. Pat O'Neill. He was a good friend of mine. He was very instrumental down in Asbury. When folks would come there, it's a life-changing thing, your retirement, and you don't know a lot of folks, and Pat was very good of going out and making people feel at home, and just a very, very nice man, nice family, so my condolences to them. And then, so I don't know if everybody knows, but last night, we had a fire in Solomons on a Rita that we put together here. It was a relief to us to know that no one was injured. We want to thank the first responders who were on the scene. Unfortunately, multiple businesses in Solomons have been impacted by the fire. Our thoughts are with the owners and their employees who are affected. Our economic development staff immediately reached out to impacted businesses. That includes the Solomons Veterinary Clinic. Thank goodness, no animals were harmed. The Producent Adventure Center, Vanish Treasures, Tiki Tanning, and HLW Electric. Economic Development will also reach out to the adjoining property owners who may be affected by demo construction, utility interruptions, while the businesses and property owners recover from the tragedy. So heartbreaking, heartbreaking. It's, it was a total loss, and hopefully they can get back to some type of normalcy as soon as possible.
Nothing, nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Weems?
I want to, just bringing up that the St. Leonard Vision Group provided $250 for four scholarships to St. Leonard students. The recipients of the scholarships were Kelsey Bartholomew, Owen Brevard, Rachel Brandon, and Rick Funchen, and I just want to congratulate them. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. So last Saturday, Commissioner Weems and I attended a Eagle Scout ceremony, the first one in over a year. Three young men got their eagle badge, and the Scoutmaster showed a video of a lot of the activities they did to earn their badge, and boy, I want to be an Eagle Scout now. These guys traveled over the whole country.
I think, I think there's an age requirement.
Yeah, there is. Hiking and rafting, and it was pretty cool.
You only missed it by a year.
Yeah, you were close, you were close. Yeah, I can't even remember 18. So I want to congratulate those young men again on that outstanding accomplishment, and had a good crowd there. Fortunately, the COVID restrictions were lifted, so the place was packed, and.
And what was amusing, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hands, I asked a straw poll if we wanted to read the proclamations individually. Please raise your hand.
And only the mothers raised their hands.
Yeah, yeah, so it was warm. It was hot, not much breeze.
It was a little warm, was a little warm.
A heat badge.
Also, that I learned that day, our previous county commissioner, Senator Bernie Fowler, has moved to Asbury, and, you know, he's almost 98 and still sort of taking care of himself, but needed a little help. So we all want to keep the good senator in our prayers. And I guess the last thing I, oh, the other thing before I get to my last item is the Dunkirk Master Plan process starts, so ask you all to participate in that. I think the first meeting is virtual, but they've assured me that after that, they're going to be open to the public. So, and all county offices are open. We do encourage you to call, make an appointment, because some of them are in very tight spaces, and we don't want a whole bunch of people coming in at one time, but we have opened up the county offices, and the judge has not opened up the courthouse. So the last item I have is Memorial Day is vastly approaching. I hope, I know it's a day where there's a lot of fun activities going on and a lot of good food is consumed, but we all need to take a moment and remember what we're celebrating, and that many, many people have sacrificed their lives and family, have lost family members, to make sure that we can have a good time and this country remains free. So I just ask you all that on Memorial Day, just take a minute to remember all those who have sacrificed for the benefit of the rest of us. So other than that, I have nothing else. I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that we go into executive session, and that is pursuant to provisions article, subsection three dash zero five B one I to discuss personnel matters of employees over whom it has jurisdiction, and three dash zero five B three to discuss acquisition of real property for a public purpose.
Second.
Have a motion in the second that we move into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five oh. Everyone have a great day.